Everybody coming in and thank you for coming to the Metropolitan Planning Commission. And so Commissioners, we'll go ahead and call the Metropolitan Planning Commission of the January ninth meeting to order. And thank you for coming down. Happy New Year, everybody. I know there's some football games on tonight, so if everybody would only talk for 30 seconds, that would be great. No, I'm just kidding. But we really do appreciate everyone coming down. And so the adoption of the agenda is, we're on item B, which is the adoption of the agenda, which was sent out earlier. Is there a motion to adopt? There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. And next, we're on item C, which is the approval of last year's December 12th, 2024 minutes. This was also posted earlier. Is there a motion to adopt the December 12th minutes? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. Next is the recognition of the council members. And before we do that, Commissioners, I was told that our, our sound system is very sensitive. And we know that, but it was, it went out like three times in one of the last meetings. So just be very gentle, go slow, don't rush, and hopefully, we won't have a, knock on wood, we won't have an interruption of the sound system. And so y'all know that we can't do the meeting without the sound system because of, so just be gentle. All right. So recognition of the council members. And I saw Councilwoman Webb, you want to come up? Good to see you. Thank you for coming down. Appreciate you coming. Well, hold on. We got to turn your microphone on. See, but we'll be gentle, Councilwoman. I know. There we go. 30 seconds. That's good.
Hope everybody had a good Happy New Year, and just wanted to say on my three projects that I have no opposition. I had meetings and everything. We've worked everything out, and I would just like to have the planning department's approval.
Thank you.
Stay safe tomorrow.
Wow, that was less than 30 seconds. Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council members? I want to make sure. We have a lot of former, oh, Councilman, come on up. Welcome. You know, we have a lot of former council members in here, but welcome, Councilman. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Jeff Prep T, District 25. I just wanted to come and speak very briefly in support of item number 32, which is on the agenda for this evening. It's, it will likely be on consent, but I just wanted to state that this is a necessary step for this specific parcel. This, a little bit of background, this parcel was created through deed and not through the actual process. So this plating is, is necessary for the continued use and development and the specific residential use and development of, of this parcel. So I'm just coming here to speak in favor and appreciate your all's consideration. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down, Councilman. All right. I think I, Councilwoman Benedict?
With her item.
You're going, okay. Did I see Councilwoman Welsh? I want to make sure. Okay, I didn't. All right. We, we want to, we really try to make sure we get the council members. All right. All right. So seeing no other council members, we are on item E, which is items for deferral withdrawal. And I think Mr. Schink is going to take us through that. Is this your first time?
Reading the agenda.
Yeah, reading the agenda. That's good. All right. Well, talking to the microphone. That's good. There we go.
Okay. Our items for deferral or withdrawal tonight are, starting on page three of your agenda, item number two, 2023Z003TX001 Downtown Code Amendment. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. On page four of your agenda, item number four, 2023SP086001 The Collective. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. Item number five, 2024SP003001 Burkett Corner. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 27th meeting. Item number six, 2024SP036001 832 West Trinity. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 27th meeting. Item number seven, 2024SP039001 Brentwood Chase 3. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number 10, 2024SP048001 4222 and 4278 Central Pike. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 27th meeting. Item number 11, 2024SP049001 5642 Valley View SP. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. Item number 12, 2024SP057001 2908 12th Avenue South. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. Item number 13, 2024SP060001 1609 4th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. On page six of your agenda, item number 15, 2022S22001 3862 Hudson Avenue. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. Item number 17, 2024S139001 Shular Clarksville Highway. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. On page seven of your agenda, item number 21, 2024DTC014002 600 4th Avenue South. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. Item number 23, 2024Z069PR001. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. On page eight of your agenda, item number 24, 2024Z125PR001. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 27th meeting. Item number 25, 2024CP004002 Madison Community Plan Amendment. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. Item number 26, 2022SP03003 930 McFerran Avenue. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. Item number 28, 2024SP055001 Veritas Corner SP. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. On page nine of your agenda, item number 29, 2025SP002001 Walton Park. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. Item number 30, 2025SP006001 Briarwood Townhome SP. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. Item number 31, 2025SP007001 13905 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. On page 11 of your agenda, item number 40, 2025Z005PR001. Staff recommendation is defer to the February 13th meeting. And that concludes the items for deferral or withdrawal.
Thank you, Mr. Schink. And so Commissioners and Mr. Schink, let me make sure I get these right. So these are the following items for deferral withdrawal. Items number two, four, five, six, seven, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, 17, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 40. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the items for deferral withdrawal. Is there a motion? There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and those items are deferred or withdrawn. So that takes us to item F, which is the consent agenda, which is passed all at one time.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Schink.
Items noted on the agenda as on consent tentative will be read aloud at the beginning of the meeting to determine if there's opposition present. If there is opposition present, please raise your hand, and the item will be taken off the tentative consent agenda and placed on the agenda to be heard, in which they are listed on the agenda. If no opposition is present, the item will be placed on the consent agenda. So notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So starting on page three of your agenda, item number one, 2024CP012001 Southeast Community Plan Amendment. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page four of your agenda, item number three, 2024Z022TX001. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda.
He said three.
You have opposition?
He got excited.
Are you guys okay? Okay.
Item number eight, 2024SP043001 1265 McGavick SP. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. On page five of your agenda, item number nine, 2024SP044001 215 One Mile. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page six of your agenda, item number 14, 2024SP063001 866 Youngs Lane. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 16, 2024S134001 102 Scenic View Road. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 18, 2024S142001 Canridge Farms South. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page seven of your agenda, item number 19, 2024S186001 Chandler Reserve Phase 5. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 20, 2024S187001 Chandler Reserve Phase 6. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 22, 2024Z051PR001. So rezoning on Plum Street and Atlantic Avenue. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. On page eight of your agenda, item number 27, 2023SP050001 2116 Scott SP. Is there anyone here in opposition to this? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. On page nine of your agenda, item number 32, 2023S151001 Final Platte South Portion of Lot 20 Plan of Glen Echo. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item 33, 2024S178001 Oakwood Commons. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page 10 of your agenda, item number 34, 2024S184001 1245 Kenmore Place. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the consent agenda. Item number 35, 2025S007001 Overlook at Aaron's Crest Phase 2. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 36, 3879P006 Rivergate Mall In-N-Out Burger. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 37, 2017UD005010 River North Urban Design Overlay Amendment. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 38, 2024Z098PR001. So rezoning on 11th Avenue North. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. On page 11 of your agenda, item number 39, 2025Z001PR001. So rezoning on Ludie Street. Is anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be on the agenda to be heard. Item number 41, 2025Z006PR001. This is a rezoning on Hartford Drive. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 42, 2025Z007PR001. This is a rezoning at 1704 County Hospital Road. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Item number 43, 2025Z008PR001. This is a rezoning at 1809 County Hospital Road. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item will be placed on the consent agenda. And on page 12 of your agenda, item number 44, 2025Z009PR001. This is a rezoning on Leicester Avenue, Woodycrest Avenue. Is there anyone here in opposition to this item? This item
Just give us a moment. We, we always try to make sure that everybody is taken care of. So we, we think that somebody may have showed up for an item to discuss. So just give us one short second. Staff's talking to them.
Item 16 will be on the agenda to be heard.
So everybody, item 16, we're just going to pull it and put it on to be heard, and then we'll ask that if, when we get to it, if there's still an opposition. Okay. Keep going, Mr. Schink.
Oh, that concludes the, yeah. So now I'll go through the captions. All right. Ms. Leal, as information for our audience, if you're not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancellor of your Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements happen met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal Starting on page three of your agenda, item number one, 2024CP012001 Southeast Community Plan Amendment. This is a request to amend the Southeast Community Plan by changing the community character policy from T4NE to T3CC and T3NE with CO policy to remain for properties located at 5960 and 5966 Nolansville Pike. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page four of your agenda, item number three, 2024Z022TX001. This is a request to amend Section 1704 of the Metropolitan Code zoning regulations to add a definition for bar or nightclub and amend the definition of beer and cigarette market. Staff recommendation is to disapprove as submitted and approve with a substitute. On page five of your agenda, item number nine, 2024SP044001 215 One Mile. This is a request to rezone from RS 20 to SP zoning for property located at 215 One Mile Parkway to permit 87 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. On page six of your agenda, item number 14, 2024SP063001 866 Youngs Lane. This is a request to rezone from R8 to SP zoning for property located at 866 Youngs Lane to permit 159 multifamily residential units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 18, 2024S142001 Canridge Farms South. This is a request for concept plan approval to create 15 lots utilizing conservation development standards on property located at Canridge Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page seven of your agenda, item number 19, 2024S186001 Chandler Reserve Phase 5. This is a request for final plat approval to create 39 residential cluster lots and open space on a portion of property located at Chandler Road and Hidden Hill Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 20, 2024S187001 Chandler Reserve Phase 6. This is a request for final plat approval to create 54 residential cluster lots and open spaces on a portion of property located at Chandler Road and Hidden Hill Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 22, 2024Z051PR001. This is a request to rezone from IR to RS 3.75 for properties located at Plum Street and Atlantic Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page nine of your agenda, item number 32, 2023S151001 Final Platte South Portion of Lot 20 Plan of Glen Echo. This is a request for final plat approval to create one lot on property located at 3603 Belmont Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including an exception to Section 3-5 for lot frontage and lot size. Item number 33, 2024S178001 Oakwood Commons. This is a request for concept plan approval to create six lots on property located at Bethwood Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page 10 of your agenda, item number 34, 2024S184001 1245 Kenmore Place. This is a request for concept plan approval to create six lots and dedicate right-of-way on properties located at 1245 Kenmore Place. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including an exception to Section 3-5 for lot frontage and lot size. Item number 35, 2025S007001 Overlook at Aaron's Crest Phase 2. This is a request for final plat approval to create 44 lots on property located at Kemp Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 36, 38-79P006 Rivergate Mall In-N-Out Burger. This is a request to revise the preliminary plan for sign, final site plan approval for a planned unit development overlay district on property located at 1,000 Rivergate Parkway to permit a fast food restaurant. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including the conditions in the memo provided to MPC. Item number 37, 2017UD005010 River North Urban Design Overlay Amendment. This is a request to amend Title 17 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, the zoning ordinance of the Metropolitan Government of Nashville and Davidson County by amending the River North Urban Design Overlay District for various properties located on Cowan Street, Waterside Drive, Oldham Street, North First Street, River North Boulevard, Spring Street, and Cowan Court to update urban design standards related to structured parking and building materials. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including conditions in the memo provided to MPC. Item number 38 is 2024Z098PR001. This is a request to rezone from RS 5 to R6A zoning for property located at 1615 11th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. On page 11 of your agenda, item number 41, 2025Z006PR001. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to OR 20 A&amp;S for property located at 2826 Hartford Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 42, 2025Z007PR001. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to RM 9 A&amp;S for property located at 1704 County Hospital Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 43, 2025Z008PR001. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to R10 for property located at 1809 County Hospital Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. And on page 12 of your agenda, item number 44, 2025Z009PR001. This is a request to rezone from IDUD to ORI zoning for properties located at 502 Leicester Avenue and 406 Woodycrest Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. And then under item H, Other Business, item number 49, accept the director's report and approve administrative items.
Thank you. And so Commissioners, make sure we get these correct, Mr. Schink. But all, these are all to be passed on the consent agenda at one time. And here is the following list. Items number one, 3, 9, 14, 18, 19, 20, 22, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38, 41, 42, 43, 44, and 49. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, Commissioners, you've heard the items to be passed on the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and those items are adopted. And so that leads us for everybody here for the following five, five items to be considered. And that would be items number eight, 16, 27, 39, and 45. So if you don't, we'll give everybody a little bit of time to cycle out, and then we'll, we'll, we'll do the public hearing And for everybody standing, we have plenty of seats up front. Y'all come on up if you want to. We have plenty of seats. So, all right. So just a few reminders before we get going. And if you're a newcomer to the Planning Commission, we're all volunteers here, except the staff. So the Commissioners are all volunteers, and they volunteer their time, citizens of Nashville, and we appreciate y'all's service to this, this commission. A reminder to please silent your phones. And we also, I want to remind, when we have items, we're always professional here. We're polite. I will tell you clapping or yelling or all that really doesn't, it just, we'll have to stop the meeting is what happens. And that's not helpful. So we all want to have a, we want everybody to, to say their piece and say their story. And so professionalism is really important to us. Always address the chair, no calling anybody names. You know, we all, we, we're, we're as polite as the council, right, Councilwoman? And just so you know, the, the process during the hearings is they'll be the presentation. They will open up the public hearing. The applicant will get to have eight minute, 10 minutes, and then they can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. We get everybody in support, and then we'll, we'll get everybody in opposition. Rebuttal, council member speaks, and then, and then we close the public hearing, and that's when the Commissioners deliberate. So I just want to remind everybody, the process, we really appreciate everybody coming down. And we are on item eight. And Slane, I think you're going to take us through that presentation. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Celine Coningson presenting item number eight. The request is to permit a multifamily residential development. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The approximately point four or five acre site is classified as vacant residential land and located at the northwest corner of McGavick Pike and Oxford Street. It has frontage on both streets. Uh, McGavick Pike is identified as an arterial boulevard by the MCSP, the Major and Collector Street Plan. Additionally, the site has a bus stop along the McGavick Pike frontage. There are a variety of surrounding zoning districts, including single-family residential, mixed-use neighborhood alternative, mixed-use limited alternative, and one and two family The site is on the edge of a T four urban neighborhood maintenance policy. T four NM is intended to maintain the general character of existing residential urban neighborhoods. Um, T four NM areas will experience some change over time, primarily when buildings are expanded or replaced. When this occurs, efforts should be made to retain the existing character of the neighborhood. T four NM areas are served by high levels of connectivity with complete street networks, sidewalks, bikeways, um, and existing or planned mass transit. Enhancements may be made to improve pedestrian bicycle and vehicular connectivity. This site is on the edge of a T four NM policy, and it abuts a more intense policy to the east T four neighborhood center. The plan proposes six multifamily residential units. Units one and two are oriented towards McGavick Pike, while units three, five, and six are oriented toward Oxford Street. Unit four is oriented toward, uh, the shared courtyard between the units in the front there. The proposed units share access through a private drive from Oxford Street, and all units are served with surface parking. All units are proposed with a maximum height of two stories and thirty-five feet, uh, measured to the highest point of the roof line. A minimum of fifteen percent glazing is required on building facades fronting a street. Additionally, sidewalk connections are provided from all units to either McGavick Pike or Oxford Street, and MCSP requirements are met. Uh, street trees are proposed in the planting strips, and there is a landscape buffer that's proposed along the northern and western property lines with a fence. This is an example of the conceptual elevations from McGavick Pike. The subject site is currently vacant and located on the edge of an urban neighborhood maintenance policy area. Policy guidance notes, established T four NM areas may have underutilized or vacant parcels that may be developed with a broader mix of housing types at a slightly greater intensity depending on the site's proximity and location, um, which in this case, along McGavick Pike, higher classification street. While the site on the, is on the edge of a T four NM policy area, it abuts a higher intensity policy, T four urban neighborhood center to the east. The location and relationship of the site between the existing neighborhood to the west and predominant, or in the predominantly mixed-use zone neighborhood center to the east provides an opportunity for a transition in land use and building form. The plan meets the goals of the, of the T four NM policy by providing a layout consistent with the design principles identified in the policy. Uh, proposed height of all units is two stories and thirty-five feet, which is consistent with the policy guidance of one to three-story tall buildings. Landscape buffers are provided along the northern and western property boundaries, um, and they're appropriate to minimize the post-development's visual impact on the existing surrounding neighborhood. Landscaping is also used to screen the courtyard and, uh, parking from McGavick Pike. The site has access to existing transit with a bus stop located along McGavick Pike, the McGavick Pike frontage. Uh, prior to final site plan submission and with review of the final SP, discussions will be taking place with WIGO to determine an alternative location to relocate the bus stop offsite to the east. So kind of just to summarize, the subject site is suitable to serve as a transition in density and building type, uh, between a residential area and higher intensity neighborhood center due to its location on a corner, um, on a higher, along a higher classification street, proximity to transit, and its position on a policy seam. And for these reasons, staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, and so commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing. Is the applicant in the room? Come on up. Welcome, and then we'll get, the council lady can speak last.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, council lady. Go ahead, see, ten minutes, can save two of the ten minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
State your name.
Members of the commission, my name is Michael Garrigan, five one six Heather Place. Um, I'm a principal engineer with Dell and Associates, and I'm representing the property owners on this item. You know, i- it's no secret that the country, Nashville, needs housing, needs, um, attainable housing, and when we first started looking this, that was our thought process, uh, with the restaurant directly across the street and the MULA zoning, heading easterly along McGavick, coupled with this being a corner lot and the edge lot of the maintenance policy, we felt it was a, a good location, um, for higher density and, and attainable size housing. Through talks with, uh, Councilmember Benedict, she made that very clear to us, she, um, she's, although in favor of density, it's not your standard infill density you're seeing around town, your, um, courtyard-type projects that end up being thirty-six, forty feet tall, two-car garages all crammed together. This needed to, to blend with the community, uh, via its mass and its scale. Uh, we have met with the community, um, it, it was a very unique meeting, it, it, in my opinion, it was fifty-fifty. Um, we discussed in detail the entire concept of two large homes on a lot, or six homes that are sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet, uh, and the pros and cons, and it, there was nobody on the fence. Everybody was either very much in favor of building the workforce-style housing we're proposing, or very much against it. Um, and it's really comes down to opinion, and if you ask my opinion, um, if you're trying to blend in with a neighborhood, it, it's much more going to lean towards the mass and the scale. The, the two-story craftsman bungalow-style homes, uh, that are proposed, uh, although there are six on a half acre, would go unnoticed. What would go noticed is, um, the two houses that are forty-five hundred to five thousand square feet, three stories tall, um, and, and I don't mean that as, as a threat or a warning, I'm, I'm saying that exists, Riverside Village, that exists, uh, Riverside and Rosebank, therefore sale, I believe they've sold two out of ten of them. Um, there are big houses in this area that are listed and sold at north of a million dollars. So it's, it's realistic in this market, um, and what we tried to do here is to keep the height down, to keep the square footage down, that's how it becomes attainable for, for teachers, firemen, police officers, um, and it doesn't turn into the, um, McMansion, quite frankly. Um, so, um, through the meeting, you know, we did hear some concerns, and we revised our plan to make our best attempts to address them. Um, one of the comments was, of course, the density, we reduced that from seven to six. Um, one was the buffer yards, we increase, increased that from five feet to ten feet and added the opaque fencing in. Um, we, um, of course, the sidewalks and the curb and gutter, that's a, pretty much a standard for an SP, but we're also reworking the crosswalk at McGavick and Oxford, and we're working, um, and agreed to, as part of this SP, um, help MTA and WIGO upgrade the, the bus stop. Um, so, you know, really, that's, that's kind of our, our point of view for, on this is, you know, the smaller-scale homes, um, keeping the streets gay. I did leave off that they asked us to increase the front setbacks, which we did, um, adding an additional five feet, I believe, along Oxford, uh, and ten feet along McGavick. So we're trying to get a project, you know, that, that meets a need that, that Davidson County has, um, and still is a viable project for our client, because, you know, at the end of the day, is this nine to ten thousand square feet and two houses or six. That's all I have, I'll take the rest of my time, thank you.
Thank you, and we'll reserve two minutes, uh, for your rebuttal. All right, anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up. Everyone will have two minutes, please state your name, and we're not requiring address, but gen, general, where you're from.
All right, so my name is Chris Wright, I do live in East Nashville, and, uh, I'm a big, big fan of higher density, so I, I do fully support, uh, this plan. I think it's a very thoughtful plan. I like seeing that these houses are, uh, just not, they're not large, so I believe that they're more attainable for, for some buyers. Um, I've seen other instances in East Nashville where, uh, there was an opportunity, um, to potentially rezone for higher density, and it didn't happen, and then, this was on Douglas, and, uh, instead of building two homes on each lot, they just built one home on each lot, and they just went very big, very big, like one and a half million dollar homes. And those, three of those four are still sitting, so this is just an instance where, you know, they had, there was an opportunity there to go smaller, like they're doing here, and I just think that's, that's, uh, more attainable for a lot of buyers. So, again, East Nashville resident, I fully support the higher density here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Welcome.
Uh, DJ Sullivan, uh, District Seven, Scott Avenue. This property is, uh, five miles from the city center, it's a urban area. This property is next to a popular small business hub, several restaurants, a bar, a cafe, doctor's office, pharmacy, pet store, and a gas station. This property is served by a bus line, has a bus stop on the property, a bus stop that will be approved at no cost to Metro if the SP goes through. This property is vacant, has been for quite some time. By all objective measures, this property is an appropriate place for dense housing. If we leave the zoning in place, we know for certain that two houses will be built eventually, and each sold for over a million dollars. There's already several examples of this happening in the area. In Inglewood, single-family zoning is millionaire zoning. I own a home near this property, I like my neighborhood, I want more non-millionaires to come live here. The only way we can achieve any kind of affordability is to split the cost of land between more homes. If we approve the plan for six homes, they will sell for much less than a million dollars. If we approve this plan, four additional families will have homes with zero displacement occurring. We are in a housing affordability crisis, let's do what makes sense and welcome more families to East Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Make sure we get everybody. All right, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, state your name, and we appreciate you coming down.
Uh, my name is Matthew Bond, I live at thirty-five nineteen Gulf Street, which is just a half mile from this property. I oppose this SP, but I do so reluctantly because I agree with the supporters that Nashville does need more housing and that this parcel can sustain more than two houses. But that it can sustain more than two does not mean that it can sustain six. Um, the staff review observes that this parcel is at a transition point between a mixed-use block and a long stretch of residential blocks. More exactly, Oxford Street itself is the transition. This parcel is the first residential parcel, and it's located at an awkward intersection where McGavick Pike, a very narrow arterial and definitely not a boulevard, meets three other streets, though not at right angles, three others that are narrow residential streets. Thus, imposing six units here would be less of a transition and more of an infarction. Nonetheless, it is a parcel that can, that would be comfortable with four single-family houses, each with driveway. Houses with driveways are the standard in this neighborhood, and four houses, though a slightly tighter fit, would still fit right in. Many of us at the neighborhood meeting last fall proposed four as a suitable compromise, there was not a fifty-fifty split between two and six or seven. Many of us said that we wanted four, and other people shouted that they wanted ten, that the developer move from seven units to six shows that he wasn't really serious in respecting the neighborhood. Those in support of this SP constantly repeat these two reasons: more houses are always better, and Nashville needs more affordable housing. The first argument here is expressing an ideology, not a practicality. The same argument, you could approve a twenty-story tower on this, um, lot, and these people would be even happier. The second argument is undeniable, we certainly need more housing, especially for our unhoused and our working-class neighbors, but these six units will not serve any of them. They're going to be priced at six to seven hundred thousand dollars each. They're not going to be affordable housing, they're barely affordable housing for the missing middle folks. These units will simply be starter homes for incipient millionaires. On the other hand, four houses could be permanent homes, homes where children grow up, parents grow old, and become part of one of the loveliest neighborhoods in the city. Thank you.
Time flies when you're having fun at the commission. All right, who's next? Anyone else?
Thank you. My name is Joseph Harris, and I'm here on behalf of my girlfriend, Sarah Jean Schweitzer, who's a little under the weather right now, and she lives at thirty-one oh six Oxford Street, effectively across the street. And, uh, I do plan on moving on there within a year and a half when my eldest, youngest son is out of high school, and I'm out of the same school zone, anyhow, I digress. Um, she is not feeling well, I carry an opposition quote. "I hope the views of the local neighbors expressed through the hundred and ninety petition signers, comments, fifty-three emails, and direct discussions at the community meeting from at least thirty namers, neighbors are prioritized over the profits and wishes of developers and property owners who don't live in the neighborhood. These concerns reflect what our zoning logs and community plan allow, and they are critical to maintaining the integrity of our neighborhood. My neighbors and I are deeply frustrated with the ongoing struggle to protect our community's existing zoning, uh, zoning, the environment, and our livelihoods, and the homes that we have put our life's work and savings into. We feel, uh, that our opposition to the unchecked development in the area is not being heard or considered. We are upset that the charm of the community and the beauty of our environment is being ripped away. We are not happy to feel bullied into losing everything we love about our neighborhood and our way of life for the sake of outside developers and property owners who don't live, uh, don't live here and bought property with full knowledge of our zoning laws. Their desire to profit off what we have helped create is destroying what is special about this community. They wouldn't want this type of development in their neighborhood, and neither do we. We don't want to see our neighborhood transformed into something unrecognizable for the sake of profit, and we are taking, asking for our voices to be heard in this process. Please reject this, uh, zoning request."
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Proud, thank you.
Yep, anyone else? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Maureen Morano, I live at twelve seventy-five Kenmore Place. I want to start by saying I am a native West Texan, however, I've lived here for ten years. Uh, we love that corner of where Oxford and McGavick, uh, connect. Um, I'm not opposed to development, I'm not opposed to density when it is done on appropriate lots. Um, for instance, we didn't oppose the twelve forty-five Kenmore Place development. Um, this, however, this lot has always been an issue, even empty, we had parking that thankfully Emily Benedict helped us solve by putting no parking signs, um, on the side closest to this property. Uh, but at that time, when we had parking on both sides, it created blind spots, um, where you could not see out to McGavick, and we had families with children with strollers that had near misses, we had our neighbor who used to live across the street from us that had to relocate because he broke his femur, um, and they had a new child, and they didn't want to risk getting hit while walking in our neighborhood. Um, I agree with everything Matthew Bond and Sarah Jean say, uh, Matthew Bond made the points being, this one little corner is right up on McGavick Pike, but however, um, most of that development is on Oxford, and, um, it's going to create quite a traffic jam at this very awkward bend that happens right there on McGavick, and I did the police ride-along, and we were speeding down that street and that cop car down McGavick, and I mean, I'm telling you, if anyone had stepped out from our neighborhood, they would have been toast. And we've seen what's happened on Twelfth Avenue South with those businesses. Um, I don't care what kind of protective measures go in right there with crosswalks, et cetera, that's not a safe corner for this type of density, um, you know, keep that for twelve forty-five, that's perfectly fine. Um, this, four max, and I also disagree, um, definitely half of the people at our meeting discussing this plan were not in favor.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for your time. Uh, my name is Patrick Sansone, I live at twelve seven five Kenmore Place, just a few, uh, addresses away from this, and I agree with, uh, everything that's been said so far. I just want to- I just want to emphasize that I did look at the letters that have come into planning regarding this. What I saw was that among those letters, there were thirty-one unique addresses expressing opposition to this zoning change. There were thirteen in support. So thirty-one versus thirteen. And twenty of those that expressed opposition to the zoning change were direct neighbors of this within a block or two of this proposed development, either on Kenmore or Oxford or Lovejoy, so directly impacted by this. Those are the people that have expressed that they do not approve of this. They want the zoning to change. I suppose if a proposal was presented that was less density, that might be taken into consideration. But in general, the direct neighbors of this do not want this kind of density in the neighborhood for all the reasons that have already been expressed, so I won't go, go over that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood, that this is not a fifty-fifty situation. This is much, much more leaning towards opposition than support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Forrest Miller. If you read or hear that the developer is saying this is going to blend into the surrounding area, it's not, because if you look at the four restaurants in that area, they're all built out of old houses. So it's maintaining the charm of East Nashville. But what they want to put up here is pseudo-small apartments and cram as much in as possible. If they were to put four and give them back yards, like was stated, where kids can go out and play, and dogs can run, and people can have their gardens like we've all grown up or experienced in East Nashville, that would maintain the charm. But here, they're concreting half a lot and saying, "Oh, this is a residential space that'll never get used." And additionally, these are going to sell for seven hundred, eight hundred thousand. Who knows as interest rates come down? That puts a five thousand dollar mortgage on individuals there, which will most likely come down to, you know, individual young professionals that will split that between two or three couples. So what is probably presented as twelve, six cars, they say on average, will end up being twelve to eighteen cars, which will build off of the safety concerns that were already presented earlier. So this level of density, just dicing up lot after lot and cramming more and more houses in there, is not what the community wants to see, and it's not productive to maintain the current structure of East Nashville. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll make sure we get everybody. Anybody else? Seeing none, two-minute rebuttal, and then the council lady.
Thank you once again. I'm Michael Garrigan with Dell &amp; Associates. A couple of things. The, the six hundred to seven hundred thousand, I mean, obviously, we can't, this body and Metro in general can't govern sales price, but what I would say is these are, two of these homes are fifteen hundred square feet, and the other four are eighteen hundred square feet. That's the cap. Can't go over that. So if you apply the, the average per square foot house that's sold in Nashville, three hundred and ten dollars a square foot, that's four seventy-five to five fifty. The, the traffic, you know, that's a concern. That's a concern everywhere in Nashville. The speed, I heard that as well. I do believe that the new sidewalks, the street trees, the curb and gutter will help to calm that. I'm a firm believer that, that sidewalks and pedestrian activity is, is natural traffic calming. It also keeps people from stepping out into the road or anything along those lines. You know, we really did try here. We really are trying to find that common ground. I feel like, you know, I don't think anybody's happy with the two that's there with, with that product. I've, I've definitely heard the four. We've looked into that. The, the size of those puts you into, into a cost bracket that we're, we're trying to stay away from. So with that, I appreciate your time today, and we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Council lady? Sure. Yeah, it, yeah. Make sure it works.
Every button except the one I pushed. What am I doing?
Yeah, sorry, council lady. Let's, we'll turn off, see our, our microphones are very sensitive. Okay.
Got it. Oh, that's right. I'd forgotten that we have sensitive mics. So good evening, and I, I really want to thank everybody who came out tonight. It's, and also who came to the community meeting that was held a couple of months ago. I want to acknowledge that I hear you. I have heard you. Your concerns matter to me, and you've made an impact by expressing your voice in this process. So I'm very grateful that you're here. It was really good to hear from all of you, as well as all of the emails as well. Commissioners, this proposal is for medium-density housing, which balances higher-density development with the character of existing neighborhoods. It's a key part of addressing the growing shortage of affordable homes in our city. As you know, housing demand in Nashville is outpacing supply, and data shows that the need for more affordable options is urgent. State and federal policies are increasingly focused on supporting housing that can serve people priced out of areas that are closest to jobs and amenities. This was demonstrated in the presentation you had just before today's meeting. So, but also, going to twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three, I ran for office with a platform centered on building housing that works for the working class, not just the wealthy. I was honored to be elected, and I believe this is because I'm advocating for solutions that help everyday Nashvillians stay in the city that they love. We need to build responsibly by aligning with the Nashville Next Community Plan, which is a plan which envisions growth through smart transit-oriented development. The medium-densing, the medium-density housing policies within Nashville Next have not yet been fully realized. This proposal is in line with the goals of that plan, which was designed through extensive community engagement. The twenty fifteen plan anticipated the population growth we're seeing now, but we've yet to see the corresponding increase in housing stock, again, as demonstrated through the presentation that you saw earlier today. By the way, I was watching. I wasn't here, but I was watching. Great presentation by Mr. Thackston. So we've all seen how rising land costs have led to large, single-family homes that push out working families. In many cases, these oversized homes don't fully utilize community amenities. By increasing the number of homes on a parcel, as you've heard, we can bring back homes of a more manageable size, around fifteen hundred to two thousand square feet, a size that's affordable and in line with neighborhood character. Instead of oversized houses priced out of reach, we can create more affordable options that help maintain the vibrancy and diversity of our communities. This proposed development includes six two-story homes, as you've seen, ranging from fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet, with two parking spaces per unit, sidewalks, street trees, and safer access on Oxford Street, avoiding a dangerous driveway situation at McGavick and Maxi. Importantly, short-term rentals won't be allowed, and the average size of the homes aligns with what's considered a starter home in today's market. This is the kind of housing I believe we need to support Nashville's growing population and preserve the affordability of our neighborhoods. Just a little bit more, folks. Sorry to, this is, these are, I think, very important pieces, so thank you for allowing me the time to, to tell you all of this. At the community meeting that I held, the feedback was clear. Residents wanted more green space. They want a reworked parking area and a design that reflected the neighborhood's character. You heard from them tonight what their concerns were. Some of those concerns have been met. Some of them, I'm not sure if they can be met or not based on the number of units. The developer did look at that, as he said, and that didn't, you know, we're going to end up with larger units. Keeping the units smaller in size is important to me so that, again, we have that starter home, that entry-level housing that we're not seeing that stock of in the city right now, right? So the applicant did listen and made changes based on the input at the community meeting. You've, we've been through that already. I do think I want to call out that the developer is going to pay for an existing bus stop to be relocated with an upgraded bench, and also that WeGo number four will have twenty-four-hour service, which is going to greatly impact the, the service area for transit access in the area. So commissioners, this area is already surrounded by amenities that will support future residents. However, also, within walking distance, this is how Inglewood is changing. Within walking distance, there's several large, single-family homes. This is all single-family zoning in the area. These homes are priced at three times and seven times the average price of a home in this area. There is one home that is priced at three point seven million dollars on McGavick Pike next door to TVA lines. That's what's happening in Inglewood. For us to get people to be able to live on a transit line in the city, in the urban core, in the urban zoning overlay, we need to be, we need to do what this proposal is asking us to do. We cannot have three point seven million dollar homes. That's not sustainable for our city. This, that would make this a city of halves, rather than a city of those of us who bought our homes for a slower price but are fortunate enough to still live here. We want to continue to build that, and starter homes can help people do that. So in conclusion, if we don't take, if we don't make zoning changes in urban areas like this with access to bus lines, sidewalks, and a nearby neighborhood center, we'll continue to see oversized homes that are out of reach for most people. This proposal offers an alternative, providing homes that are both affordable and well-integrated in our city's growth. I appreciate staff's hard work on this, and I'm supportive of the, their recommendation. I ask for your affirmative recommendation as I bring this SP to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am. Ma'am. Ma'am, let me, I, I feel like you have forgotten what I said at the beginning of the meeting. So that's a good reminder of what we don't do, because we'll just stop the meeting, and then we'll have to restart again. All right. So seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Vice Chair, do you want to go first?
Just hit once.
Just, Eddie, we have to have the microphones for the record. And just a second, we'll reset the microphones. So thank you for your patience. And we'll wait. It just, it usually takes a few minutes. It's okay, you did.
I thought it fixed it under Charlotte's seat.
You got two minutes. We'll wait.
I hear that on YouTube. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's not that. Well, or whack it before you said something.
No, they all, even those, even those right there.
I hit it once. I don't. Are we going to just tap it going?
Okay. All right, Vice Chair. We're, sorry about that. We, the microphones are back on, and so we do that for the public hearing. We have to have the mics on for the record. So Vice Chair, you're recognized.
All right. Solid red. So thank you for coming down tonight to, to share your concerns. I'm also been a long-term resident of East Nashville. That's the Lakeland Springs area. I'm certainly aware of the development pressure that has come into East Nashville and how desirable the neighborhoods are for people who are looking to relocate to, to East Nashville. Despite the challenges that, that I can see with this property and understanding the neighborhood's concerns, in light of the presentation we had earlier today, I think this is exactly what we need to see more of happening. As everyone has pointed out, where it's, it's right by a transit line. It's walking distance to all of these different amenities. I think that, looking at the neighborhood, the scale of these homes fits in much better. I think we've all seen examples of where the, you know, a lot like this is redeveloped with two very large houses, and it looks completely out of scale with the surrounding neighborhood. These homes fit much better. Even if the price points are higher, these, these homes will fit much better with the existing character of that neighborhood. If we start going in with two very large homes, you're likely going to see that as the precedent that's getting set as other lots redevelop in this area. So I think, you know, I think this is exactly what we need to see. The price points sound high, but obviously, that's outside of our purview here. But that's what's happening in the Nashville market, and if we want to get lower-priced housing, more attainable housing, we have to look at different types of development. And I think this development pattern will work very well in the area. So I support staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Commissioner Clifton?
I can't say it any better than that. Or, 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 or from the council member who, who spoke. I just want to say I understand a little bit about why people feel the way they do, because my entire neighborhood, when I moved in, felt that way. And it's, we all think, although it's not true, that we have a right to have nothing changed in our neighborhoods. I'm not sure that this is a bad change that, that we're having here. I think it was very carefully done. I just want to affirm in some ways that I, it took a lot for me to kind of understand that zoning was about more than just kind of keeping things closer to what they've been. And I'm not trying to, to mock that. I mean, I felt the same way, and I've, I've developed over the years thinking about what we need. What? End of the mic more. And I, I just think, in spite of, in spite of the fear we have of, of change, that this is a classic example, really, a classic example of what we've been wanting to do in other places, as well as East Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? So we'll need a motion?
I'd like a motion that we adopt staff's recommendation to approve this item with all conditions.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Post no, ayes have it, and is adopted. Director.
Chairman, it's my understanding that item 16 can be voted on as a consent item, but I wonder if you might check with the audience, just to confirm that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Director. Is there anyone in the room in opposition to item number 16? Lisa, will you just read the caption real quick? And then that way, just to make sure, we want to make sure.
Yes, on page six of your agenda, item number 16, 2024 S 134 001, 102 Scenic View Road. It's a request for concept plan approval to create 10 lots on property located on Scenic View Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone in the room in opposition to item 16? Seeing none, is there a motion to place item 16 back on the consent agenda to be approved? There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Post no, ayes have it, and item 16 is placed back on the consent agenda and adopted. So item 27 is our next. And thank you, Council Lady, for, oh, you're still here. You're not leaving. Okay, got it. Oh, I see here now. Yes, ma'am. All right. So, presentation.
All right, this is item number 27 on your agenda. The request is to permit a multifamily residential development. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The Point 88 acres site is located on the western side of Scott Avenue. Surrounding zoning district is one and two family residential R6. And surrounding land uses are predominantly residential with a religious institution directly to the north. At the subject site has frontage on Scott Avenue, a Collector Avenue, as classified by the MCSP. And Gallatin Pike and Arterial Boulevard is located approximately one mile to the west. Again, this is in a T4 urban neighborhood maintenance area, which is intended to maintain the general character of existing urban residential neighborhoods. T4 NM areas will experience some change over time, primarily when buildings are expanded or replaced. And when this occurs, efforts should be made to retain the existing character of the neighborhood. T4 NM areas are served by high levels of connectivity with complete street networks, sidewalks, bikeways, and existing or planned mass transit. Enhancements may be made to improve pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity. The plan proposes 10 multifamily units and a total of five structures. One and two are along Scott Avenue and are detached units, while the remainder are grouped in units, or in two or three units to a structure. The proposed units share access via a private drive from Scott Avenue. All units have rear-loaded garages, and five additional parking spots are provided internal to the site. Units oriented towards Scott Avenue have a minimum 20-foot street setback, and the remainder of the units are oriented toward an internal open space. Units one and two along Scott Avenue are proposed with larger footprints, while the remainder have smaller footprints. The height across the whole site is 35 feet measured to the midpoint of the roof. And units one and two are proposed with a maximum height of two stories, while the rest are proposed with two and a half stories. There's a condition that's been added also, that all roofs, all units have pitched roofs. A minimum of one principal entrance and 15% glazing is required on building facades fronting a street or open space. Sidewalk connections are provided internally and from all units to Scott Avenue. And the plan also is showing requirements consistent with the MCSP. There's also varying widths of B landscape buffers on the northern, western, and southern property lines. So the plan meets the goals of the policy by providing a layout consistent with the design principles as identified in the policy. Proposed heights of all units is either two or two and a half stories, consistent with the policy guidance of one to three stories. The plan is also providing accessible and functional open space, as well as landscape buffers, to minimize the proposed development's visual impact on the existing surrounding neighborhood. While the site is located mid-block, it fronts Scott Avenue Collector. Units one and two along Scott Avenue are proposed to have a larger floor area and are detached to be reflective of the surrounding neighborhood and existing development on the eastern side of Scott Avenue, which is a predominantly single-family form. The site is also larger than most parcels in the area, and there's not consistent lot size or pattern along the western side of Scott between Ote Street and Cahal Avenue. Immediately to the north of the site, there's a large lot with a church, and to the south of the site, there's a small subdivision ending in a cul-de-sac. The irregular lot pattern offers an opportunity for modestly higher intensity infills supported by the T4 NM policy. Given the standards and the context proposed in the plan, staff finds that the proposed SP is consistent with the guidance provided in the policy and recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, and Commissioners will open this item for public hearing, and is the applicant in the room? All right, come on up, and you have 10 minutes for the presentation, and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. And if you'd state your name for the record, we appreciate you coming down.
Oh, that one. Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Scott Morton with Smith G Studio. Thank you for your service, and I'm excited to be here with you today. I apologize for coming off of laryngitis, so my voice squeaks, it's a reason. First of all, I just want to express my gratitude to the Metro staff, the community of East Nashville, and the council member Benedict for all of their engagement throughout this process, as we've explored this site for the last 10 months. We've worked together to try to develop a plan that aligns with community policies and delivers a high-quality product for East Nashville and future residents. I feel that this conversation is going to be very similar to the original project. We have a project that is a unique opportunity to support incremental development for a unique site. The site is very large compared to a typical lot in the East Nashville community. It's 100 feet wide by 375 feet deep, and so this is a great opportunity to create a development plan that promotes density in a smart and very deliberate way. We've spent a lot of time and careful consideration to develop a plan that takes into consideration not only the neighborhood context, but can deliver density and help bridge the gap of maintaining some of that neighborhood character and whatever one loves and cherishes for the neighborhood that they've invested in. And so many features of this plan, including providing for single-family detached along Scott Avenue, the public street frontage with a two-story product, a sloped roof, a setback lot, a front setback that's consistent with the area development, so that it can seamlessly fit into the community, and then focus additional density internal to the deep lot, surrounded by common open space. A few other considerations and details were also put into this. We privileged the development towards the church to the north, so that we separated these homes, as much as practical, from the residents in the southern abutting property. And we also created an extensively deep setback. We have over, I think almost 60 feet of separation from a rear setback to further separate new development from existing development. You know, this particular project kind of really affected me personally to some degree, because it's a perfect example of sort of my own situation. I lived in East Nashville for over 23 years, and a year ago, I had to relocate due to not being able to find housing. And so actually moved to Councilmember Campbell's district, I'm very happy. But I do miss that community, and I think it's important that we provide housing at all levels. You know, attainable is a relative term, affordability is a relative term. We need housing at every level, and I think by bringing this incremental density in, much like the first case, I won't, you know, reiterate all those points, but I think they're all extremely valid. And so, you know, I hope that through smart growth and incremental development, we can continue to provide these opportunities to solve our housing challenges. We did host a community meeting for this project that was very well-attended at the South Inglewood Community Center, where I spend quite a bit of time. Many residents showed up, both in favor and opposition. I think this particular development, there are significant concerns, you know, about the density and traffic from area residents that are against this, but there's also many proponents of this density and this type of development. So I do, I also understand Commissioner Clifton, the sentimentality of why people, you know, feel the way they do. And so, but we are seeing a shift in need in our community, and I think this project is another good example of how we can accomplish good design, compatible design, and address the housing crisis. So in closing, I just want to say we appreciate the support engagement we have received throughout the process from all stakeholders involved. We greatly appreciate your consideration and kindly request you support the planning commission staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will reserve two minutes for rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak in support? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael Garrigan, 516 Heather Place, I'm civil engineer on the project. As Scott stated, we've been working on this together for quite some time, going back and forth, trying to find that happy, happy space, quite honestly. We did revise the plan after the community meeting to preserve, better preserve the trees on site. There are 14 surveyed trees on this property, only one of which would be removed by the footprint of this development. There were concerns about a bioretention area we're showing in the back of the property, and we've removed that and redesigned the storm system to be water quality and quantity to be provided by the previous paver shown on the plan, as opposed to the bioretention. There were concerns about the proximity of units to the rear property line, that has been addressed. And, you know, this area is a pretty unique one, because it's, it actually has density, it just doesn't appear that way. If you look our shared property line to the west, those lots front on the Chase Street. Chase Street is 50 by 150-foot lots that are all zoned R6. Good majority of them have been developed as two-family lots. So being an engineer, I'm a math guy, I'm a numbers guy, so you take 50 by 150 times five lots, it's exactly 0.86 acres. This is 0.88 acres. So five lots, five two-family lots, that's 10 units. It's, that's, the density is in the area, it exists already today. We're trying to do that in a more subtle way, more usable way, walkable, usable open space. There's sidewalk connections from Scott Avenue to Cahal, which is a major thoroughfare for this area. So with that, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, and that was part of the original 10 minutes, and there's still two minutes left. Thank you, just for clarification. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come on up.
Hi, y'all. I'm Chris Wright, I live at South 10th Street in East Nashville. This project, just like the McGavick project, whenever I see a higher-density project like this in my neighborhood, if it's done very thoughtful with good design, I'm supportive, I appreciate it. And I think it's important that we have projects like this throughout Nashville, but in particular, just speaking, because I'm an East Nashville resident, I'm just wanting to focus on this. But, you know, all the points that Councilperson Benedict said at the end of her, her last statements at the end of the McGavick project, talking about that, I thought it was very eloquent and relevant and pertinent. I think this is, higher density is something that we need in Nashville, and again, if it's thoughtful design like this, like McGavick, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Hold on one second, we're just gonna, we're, our, our timers, hold, we're having more technical difficulties, hold on, we'll try to...
I practiced, I swear it's under two minutes.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, we just try to make sure we're fair to everyone. Give us one second.
I also promised this is the last time I'll be up here today.
It's okay.
to give you a sign when you've got five seconds left.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, hit it.
All right, DJ Sullivan, District 7, 2220 Scott Avenue. I live right around the corner from this property, and I am excited, at the prospect, it could be used to house more neighbors. I like my neighborhood, and I want to welcome more people to live here. One benefit of this property is it's currently empty. There will be no displacement from this redevelopment. We get to welcome 10 new families without displacing a single person. This property is within walking distance of Gallatin, which has a major transit line. It's also within walking distance of the future mixed-use Porter Road development. There was a bus line right on this street for over 90 years. It was one of the first bus lines in 1927, but we recently lost it because we lost density over the years. Households have decreased in number, and we haven't built any new units, so we lost population, we lost our bus line. So this added incremental density. Will get us closer to getting that bus line back someday. Let's talk about the drainage. The standards that SPs are held to for drainage are much stronger than base zoning. I want to stress that leaving the zoning in place does not lower the flood risk. I know that some people are worried about flooding. I do think those are very valid concerns. We recently had a 50-year rain event this fall, something like four or five inches in a few hours, and that's, so that's fresh on a lot of people's minds, I'm sure.
You've got 15 seconds.
Okay. We're in a housing affordability crisis. Many people want to come live in East Nashville because they've heard how great it is, and each new house we build is one less family that has to feel the pain of displacement. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up, welcome. So Lisa's gonna hold up a sign, when you have 15 seconds left, so we apologize...
No problem, no problem. My name is Robert Ray, I'm one of the brothers at Scott Avenue, I'm one of the elders there. And we've been in that location for over 60 years. One of the gentlemen mentioned about the bus line, the reason nobody's riding the buses, because they don't have jobs, they didn't have jobs, jobs were not plentiful. So you didn't have people that lived in the neighborhood that drove buses. People that built East Nashville, I don't know if all you all came from there or not, but people that built it were working-class people. We were not blue-collar, white-collar people, people that were lawyers and doctors and judges. judges, just regular working people, trash men, construction workers. Matter of fact, that was one of my first jobs, doing contractor work. And those were the people that lived there. These homes they're talking about building, people won't be able to afford them, not working-class people. They can't afford that. And then the houses they're putting in the area, to me, they look like barns with windows on both sides, the front and back. They don't even look like the houses that are there, the houses that people moved in the area to live in. And another thing I don't understand is, anytime somebody talks about building, we have a lot of dilapidated, torn-down buildings around this city. Nobody, why can't anybody develop those, let people live there, instead of raping our One problem with this spot is, it's gonna be traffic, traffic, traffic. If you go down Chase or Northview now, you can't even get down the street. It's one-way, back and forth. You can't drive down the street. Scott Avenue where we are, 15 seconds, has one sidewalk. This is gonna bring more traffic, more noise. And we don't want that there. We would agree to two to three units, but not 10. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing, oh, one more. Come on. Sorry. Yeah, I didn't see you. Come on up. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Hi. My name's Forrest Miller. I live directly behind this development that's proposed here. I bought my house last year right behind this, and if I knew this was going in, I wouldn't have bought the house. I wouldn't have wanted to look at 10 houses directly behind me, staring down, looking in my backyard constantly. When I bought the house, I stepped out into the backyard and saw how quiet it was. It's fully developed with green space. You can't hear anything. I can go sit on my porch, and it's perfectly nice. This is gonna bring 20 cars directly to my backyard. There's gonna be lights shining into my house every night when I try to go to sleep, right? There's a parking lot that's gonna be within 100 yards of my back door. There's gonna be, you know, 10 dogs that are probably gonna be left at home barking all day, right? It's gonna bring so much noise to the surrounding quiet neighborhood that so many people work from home, live in, constantly. Our environment's changed, and this is not suitable to today's standards. Additionally, we're gonna bring in so much more traffic from delivery drivers, Uber Eats, Amazon, FedEx, going on and on. If only two cars live at each house here, I would be shocked, because if you look around, they say the average is one car, but what really tells the story is the mean, right? What's the most reoccurring? My street is currently gridlocked. I have to snake between current, like, four cars just to turn into my own driveway, because there's not enough room. And this is not gonna help that. They say there's, oh, there's five extra spaces. Okay, so there's not five extra friends? There's not, this is just way too many houses. The community was in support of four, maybe six, and we've brought that to them, and they have not adjusted this plan at all. And there was probably about 40 people against it, and three who were for it at the original meeting, and they haven't changed anything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? I wanna make sure we get everybody. All right. Seeing none, two minute, oh, we got more. Oh, we got more. Come on up. And we, we can use a, ma'am, we can use the microphone at the table for, for you? Wanna turn that one off? There we go. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Good afternoon. I'm right down there. My name is Francis Taylor, and I live at 2114 Scott Avenue, right next door. I was driving down Northview the other night, and there was so many, the cars parked on both sides. If I had rolled the window down and put my arm out, I could have touched one of those parked cars there. There's no way that we can get any kind of movement around there. The traffic is gonna cut down everything. And then you get all of the, these people that moves in, they're gonna have teenagers, it's gonna be bumping the horn and all this loud music and stuff. And where, where are we going to go to get some grass? Everything is gonna be concrete. Where's the grass? I think that, I think you're just cutting us out of everything, and you shouldn't do it. And I'm asking, please, don't do it. Just don't cut us out. And I like to see the wildlife. I like to see the birds, the deer that comes over in my yard. But they, they're scared to come, because every time they come out, here's a lot of noise that's gonna run them back. And I thank God put us on earth to enjoy our lives and let the animals enjoy theirs too. Lord, I, I just don't, I just don't think we should, I don't think we should rezone to get, you know, 10 units in there. If they put two or three houses on that lot, they may be able to, to work, but 10-
Thank you, ma'am. We really appreciate it.
Too much, too much, too much, too much.
My name is Phil Klopke. I live on Chase Street, strongly oppose this project. I was actually discouraged with our community meeting, how it was handled. It was not, there was a large amount of people that were there, and the people that were supportive, there are, there were some neighbors that were there that were supportive, but there was also people that were brought in and, quite frankly, gaslighted that whole conversation, shaming us for even opposing and asking questions. We weren't, we even talked about less units, and that wasn't even considered whatsoever. Are we talking about a housing crisis? I fully acknowledge that. We need to figure that out. My challenge is, we live in South Inglewood where we're constantly rezoning, I get that, but then we also displaced how many affordable housing with this Porter Road project, which is only gonna bring in 800 units in our neighborhood. So I, I'm really concerned, you know, we're continuing to, you know, if we say yes to something like this, and I, and I think of this lady right here, in terms of living right next door, it's only going, you know, to bring investors and the next person to try to buy it out. Also, that church that's right there, right? There's parking, we have a parking problem, there's, I don't think there's enough parking. What happens if all the neighbors and the friends just start, you know, karateing the church parking lot, right? That's also gonna make that awkward for that local church, and say, hey, this is not necessarily right. Yes, on Chase Street, it is impossible to drive down our street. My next-door neighbor, there's, they're renting it out, there's four cars. So there's, two of the cars are on the road. I, I can only see this being even much more of a burden. There's no local restaurants, there's nothing nearby. This is a neighborhood, and I think we need to be cautious about this, and I'm really surprised that there was no revisions that happened with the plan.
Sir-
Not a lot of transparency.
Address the chair.
Strongly discouraged.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up.
My name is Etta Marie Simpson, Bray. I've lived in the neighborhood about 60 years.
Ma'am, if you repeat that again, there you go.
I apologize to you.
No, no, you're good. Thank you.
The only thing that I want to say is that if any of you travel in the neighborhood, look at the street, look at the homes and everything, you will see that there's really not enough room for what they're planning to build. And I thank you very much for allowing me to get up and speak. Have a good year.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? We'll make sure we get everybody. All right. Anybody else? Seeing none? Two-minute rebuttal.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Again, Scott Morton, Smithy Studio. Thank you. I do appreciate the comment there. We were, at the community meeting, there was some disruptive individuals at the end there, and I assure you, they were not brought in, they were attendees that we did not have any knowledge of. And so, people that know me, I would never, ever do anything that's not integrity in that regard. So apologize if that was a concern. As far as the, the changes, I mean, we did listen. We, we spent some time after that meeting thinking about the different aspects of what we heard, and, you know, legitimate concerns and how we can address them. And so, we did reduce the density after the meeting from, I believe it was 12 units to 10. Also, there was some desire to protect a specific tree. We relocated the driveway to protect this large champion tree. Lastly, there was also some concern about headlights shining into windows in adjacent developments, and we also offered to put up opaque fencing and landscaping to prohibit, you know, any light intrusion. So just want to clarify that there, there were some revisions based on direct feedback that we received during that meeting, and has benefited the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, you wanna do the same spot? She should take care of us.
I'm learning slowly. I think that's, maybe council members don't have that ability? I don't know. My colleague mayor may not agree. Anyway, just kidding. So thanks again, commissioners, again, for your service. And once again, thank you to everybody who came out tonight to voice your opinions, and thanks for coming to the community meeting that we held. Your input matters, and it's been heard. And I know that change is hard. I know that this is 10 units, and that's 10 units of what was presented before. This site plan is a little bit different from what was presented before. This includes more green space, among other things. But I can really relate to being the next-door neighbor and having development happen next door. It happened to us, and we got rats. It was a terrible thing. We had, and we've had to deal with rats, right? So we've had somebody come in the house and deal with all of that because development took place next door. I hear you. What I, what I like about this property is that it's vacant land today. The gentleman who sold it lived in the house before. I know Brother Zee and his wing shack, and love his food. So he sold this property sometime back, and this development has been worked, been worked on for some time. So I'll keep my remarks a little bit brief, for as much of what I said earlier is directly relevant here, which is that this type of development represents general density that we need to meet Nashville's growing housing demands. And as I said earlier when I ran for office, I did so on a platform that was based on building housing that Nashvillians can afford, not $1 million homes, like we're seeing around the neighborhood that are out of reach for most people. In this case, the density being proposed mirrors that of the surrounding parcels. One of the earlier slides showed the lots, and you can see the lot patterns in this area are varied, but they're mostly very dense. For instance, the key difference here is that this property spans nearly an acre, while the neighboring homes oftentimes are HPRs on .17 acres. So .08 acres per home is, is less, or actually is more intense than what this development is, is proposed to have. So it also is transit-oriented, oriented development, of course, which is vital for our city's future. It's a 10-minute walk to Gallatin Pike, where the second-highest ridership we go route in the city is, the number 56. That's gonna run every 10 minutes. It currently runs about every 15 to 20 minutes, but with a new transit plan, it'll be every 10 minutes. And it's only 600 feet from Cahal Avenue, which is a collector's street that has a bike lane from Gallatin Road all the way to Shelby Bottoms, way deep in the neighborhood. So an excellent location. And moreover, the site is also within walking distance, it was mentioned, to the Porter and Cahal mixed-use development that was recently approved. There was one person that came out, this is a 750-unit development, that some of you were not on the commission at the time. We had one person come out and speak against it at the Planning Commission meeting, and we had no one come and speak against it at the council meeting, and it passed. So for a 750-unit development, it's pretty big for us to be able to get that passed. It's desired by the neighborhood. It's going to include retail, it's going to include restaurants, it's going to activate South Inglewood Park, and it's going to connect to this site through sidewalks down Cahal And we're also going to replace that affordable housing that it's displacing, which is, we can talk about that, I'll send you my newsletter about that, but we're replacing that one-for-one through the mixed-income pilot program. So we will replace all of those affordable units. I believe this SP strikes the right balance, serving the needs of our current residents while planning for the future. And I believe that through collaboration with proponents, opponents, and the planning department, we've arrived at a proposal that's going to be an asset to this neighborhood and to Nashville as a whole. I like that the two homes in the front face the street that mimics the rest of the neighborhood, and I like that the other units are tucked behind, that they all have parking is significant for the area as well. There's been about a decade of rampant development in the area without much community benefit, and so I think the residents nearby are resistant to the change because they haven't benefited from the change. With an SP, we get to do things like manage stormwater better. We get to make the property better than if it were just developed without the SP. So this really, I believe, is going to benefit the community in the long term. I'm supportive of the staff's recommendation after review with them, and I ask for your affirmative recommendation once again as I bring this SP to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Marshall, do you want to start us off?
Thank you. So these are always tough decisions, and I certainly always respect the voice of the community when it comes to, you know, things remaining the same. But the reality is that that's not what Nashville is all about anymore, and we have to look at a bigger picture of serving the larger community as a whole. South Inglewood and that area over there has certainly changed from 30 years ago when I used to live over in East Nashville. And so I can appreciate the opinions of the neighborhood. I really appreciate the council, you know, talking a little bit more in-depth about that area like that, because it helps me get more comfortable with it. So with that said, I am more in support of approving the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there any other discussion from the commissioners?
Yeah, I just wanted to really echo the comments that Commissioner Marshall made, and also that Commissioner Farr and Clifton made on the prior case that I think are as applicable here. And I also, I do, I wanted to just say, I do appreciate hearing from, directly from the council, council member who knows the area and has talked more directly to the people. But I also share the community concerns with change. That is always hard. And I guess I have a quick question. So I'm inclined to support a staff's recommendation as well, but I do have a question for the staff, just in terms of the T4 maintenance of general character. I think some, you know, some of the comments we heard are that this is out of character. I think the council member addressed that satisfactorily to me. But if you all could just talk about how you go about thinking of recommending approval for an SP in terms of that particular characteristic of maintaining the character of a neighborhood.
Sure. So not every neighborhood maintenance area is the same, and not every location within a neighborhood maintenance area is the same. So in this case, where you have sort of irregular and varied lot patterns, we might look at it just slightly different than if you had a consistent lot pattern along the block. Where you have larger lots, such as this, in an area that is characterized by really smaller lots, we have larger lots, then we might consider those as sort of infill sites. And there's some language in the neighborhood maintenance policy that talks about infill sites being appropriate maybe for different forms of housing than what otherwise might be expected within a neighborhood maintenance area. So neighborhood maintenance areas are sort of not ever meant to be no change. So, neighborhood maintenance areas are sort of not ever meant to be no change. They can experience change. Some of the ways that we have tried to address particularly in this SP with keeping the character is that the units 1 and 2 that are up at the street are a bit larger, but their height is held down to be more consistent with what's already existing on the street in regards to height. And so, some of the things that we can do is look at the spacing of the units or the height of the units. Pulling the units away from that southern property line to give a bit more space between what is an existing residence, those are some of the ways that we can keep character. Tucking the attached units back behind those detached units, where the area is characterized by detached, is another way to maintain character.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry. The... Month's work. It's work? All right, Commissioner Dundon, be gentle with the button. Just, are you, Commissioner Dundon, are you finished? Are you completed? Thank you for your comments. All right. Vice Chair, do you have a comment?
I guess I just wanted to provide support to the community concerns, and just a little differentiation with this one and the prior case, because I know they are similar. I do see the concern with 10 units here. That is definitely a significant increase, although it is a very deep lot. And I also really do understand the concerns of the residents that are not living on Scott, because Scott actually is manageable, but when you go to Otay and Chase, I mean, it is gridlocked back there. So, I don't know for the councilwoman what opportunities exist, if there are opportunities that exist, to try to improve the mobility in those side streets, because there's so much new housing in that area. If you want to come and address that, that would be fine, but I think that that's really needed.
If, thank you for the opportunity to speak again. So, Endot originally proposed an alley on this. The neighbors were adamantly against the alley because of their properties that abut up to it. They've used that right-of-way with, you know, sheds and things like that. So, the alley, I think, was the thing that Endot had in mind to improve that, but since that's not a part of the plan, and they approved it as it is, Endot didn't disapprove this. But, I hear you on the other front, as far as what can we do to improve traffic flow in that area. You're exactly right. It's problematic. The plus side of that is cars drive slow, people don't get hit.
Well, I think, I think that getting people on Scott makes this work. If they were going out onto Otay or into the middle of that neighborhood, I would be a lot more concerned, but I do think this provides an important source of housing in this area.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other comments? Any other discussion? Will need a motion? Is there a motion?
Make motion to accept staff recommendation as approved with the conditions.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye. Pose no? Ayes have it? And item number 27 is adopted. We, commissioners, we've been here for two hours. I think that we could, I think we can do one more case and then take a break. And I know, so, so I know there's a lot of people here who have been waiting a long time. These meetings go long. I will tell you that this is a shorter meeting than some of our meetings, so, but the, you know, after two hours of a meeting, you know, sometimes we have to use the restroom, and then we'll probably take a break after this next hearing, if that's okay. Vice Chair and commissioners, does that sound okay? I don't want to, everybody can handle one more case? All right. So, let's get, Director will do item 39. All right. Jeremiah, are you going to take us through the presentation on item 39, and we appreciate it?
All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jeremiah Comey, presenting item number 39 on the agenda tonight. This is a request to reason from single-family residential RS5 to multifamily residential alternative, no short-term rental zoning for properties located at 100 and 102 Ludie Street. And staff recommendation is to disapprove RM20 ANS and approve RM15 ANS. The application consists of two parcels totaling 36 acres located along Ludie Street and 168 feet south of Alberta Street. The property has been zoned single-family residential since 2004. The property is currently vacant. The application proposes to reason the property from RS5 to RM20 ANS. The surrounding land uses are primarily single-family with some multifamily residential land uses in the immediate surrounding area. The site is located just to the east of Anateria Boulevard, Foster Avenue, with some commercial and offered land uses on the east side of Foster Avenue. The subject property has frontage along both Ludie Street and Miller Street. There is also access via an improved alley at the rear of the property. The property is located within the urban neighborhood evolving policy area, which intends to create and enhance urban residential neighborhoods that provide more housing choices, improve pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular connectivity, and moderate to high-density development patterns with shallow setbacks and minimal space in between buildings. This policy area supports higher densities and smaller lots with a broader range and integrated mixture of housing types. However, the property is also located along the policy seam of two lower-intensity policy areas, suburban neighborhood maintenance T3 N M to the east, and urban neighborhood maintenance T4 N M to the north. Therefore, the policy on the subject site is intended to serve as a transition to the adjacent policy areas. While the policy is generally supportive of higher-density residential development in relation to corridors and centers, the subject properties are not immediately adjacent to the Foster Avenue corridor and do not border a center policy area. Land uses in this area transition from higher densities in the T4 neighborhood center policy to the west to lower densities in the T4 neighborhood maintenance policy to the north and T3 neighborhood maintenance policy to the east. Based on acreage alone, the proposed RM20 ANS zoning could allow up to seven units and a maximum building height of 45 feet. RM20 ANS is on the higher end of densities that the T4 N A policy supports, and staff finds that a less intense multifamily zoning district such as RM15 ANS would provide a more appropriate transition in intensity as the land uses transition from the Foster Avenue corridor to the east. RM15 ANS could allow for a maximum of five units and would also limit height to 35 feet. The A designation will provide additional building placement and bog standards, and the N S designation will prohibit short-term rental properties. In conclusion, staff finds the RM15 ANS district provides a more appropriate transition while still allowing for a moderate increase in intensity from the existing RS5 zoning district. Therefore, staff recommendation is to disapprove RM20 ANS and approve RM15 ANS. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Comey. We appreciate it, and we will, commissioners, we'll go ahead and open this item for public hearing, and is the applicant in the room? The applicant? Come on up. Welcome. Oh, hold on a second. Do what, sir? Yeah, we'll hand him out. We'll grab him from, he has a handout.
Okay. I'm not a good public speaker, so I would prefer...
Okay. Well, if we have questions, just if you stay up front here, and we'll, you can sit down, though, that's fine. Thank you very much. So, we'll note that the applicant is here and handing out documents. We'll pass them over. All right. And so, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? In favor? Seeing none? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Please state your name, and we appreciate you coming.
Thank you all for your time this evening. My name is Jennifer Root. I am the current owner of 105 Ludie Street. I've owned it for about just over 10 years. My friend was here...
Ma'am, if you'll step forward to the microphone, there we go.
My name is Jennifer Root. I've owned 105 Ludie Street for over 10 years, owner-occupant. My friend was here earlier from 79 Ludie Street, but unfortunately had to leave. We have some major concerns regarding the change from our single-family zoning to an R20 or an R15, and would request that you would limit it to an R6. Currently, it is at the corner of a non-arterial intersection and a pure, which is a pure residential street on a narrow alley corner. You cannot even get my SUV down that street while allowing someone to walk down it at the same time. No sidewalks, many children and families walking. It is a speeding traffic area, which years ago, a year ago, had bumpers put in to help limit, but coming from the direction on the side, that continues to be a speed issue. We've had multiple accidents on that street because of the high concentration at the other end with the market, to include my vehicle being totaled because of frequent drivers. We're open to the increasing of the density, and we know that lot has been vacant, but with only 97-foot of road frontage, we are really concerned about increasing it to such a high volume. It does not match the single-family units that are all around it and surround it, and the children, we risk, we worry about the heavy traffic and speeding and the bumps not doing enough if we do allow multiple units, because all traffic would have to come out to Ludie Street to exit that property. Please make sure that you keep our neighborhood safe for our children and our families there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? So, you can have a rebuttal. Would you like, no? Okay. The letter speaks for itself. Okay. That you gave us. And the council member, I believe, is not here. No. Counselor Welsh is not here. All right. So, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Clifton, do you want to start us off?
I am. Oh, okay. I thought it didn't light up or anything. So, I don't really want to discuss the merits of this, but just to ask a question, our recommendation is some, one thing that we often do, we disapprove but say we would approve this other one if the motion was that. I'd like for the staff to maybe discuss that a little bit, about why one is better than the other, and to see if the person who spoke against this would still be against it with that change. Can I ask that?
So, we looked at the request and determined that it could result in seven units on the site, and the zoning district would allow houses to be up to 45 feet tall, and thought that the increase in, a modest increase in density would be appropriate, but not to that degree. So, scaling it back a little bit to RM15 ANS would allow up to five units and only 35 feet tall, which would be more in keeping with the character of the homes in the neighborhood.
This is an R district now.
RS.
Currently?
It's an RS district now.
Okay. I just misread it. I know the area a little bit. Okay. Has that been discussed with the proponent as to whether he would be...
We did discuss this with the applicant. We asked if he would be willing to change his request, and he said he was not, and so, we moved forward with our recommendation.
Great. That's fine. I don't have questions. I just wanted to clarify that. I may have a question by the end.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion from the commissioners? Counselor?
Thank you, Chair. Just to follow up on Commissioner Clifton, the recommendation from the planning staff was to reduce or downzone the request from the RM20 to the RM50. Was it mainly for the height differentiation? Was there other concerns about the number of units as well?
Yeah, it was both.
Okay. And if you could kind of explain how the number of units on this street, how you all felt that that was a little bit more dense than what was needed on this street? Was it, because it fit the policy, is that correct? Either one fit the policy, is that right?
A range of zoning districts is appropriate in all of the policies, but the context of, the context of where something is within a policy and adjacent to other policies matters. So, this is a neighborhood-evolving policy, and with the last case where I talked about sort of not every neighborhood maintenance is the same, and not every property within a neighborhood maintenance is treated the same, the same with neighborhood-evolving. In this case, it is neighborhood-evolving, however, it's adjacent to two lower-intensity policy areas with urban neighborhood maintenance to its north and suburban neighborhood maintenance to its east. And so, given its adjacency, we recognize that it's evolving, which does support more, but given its adjacency to those neighborhood-maintenance areas, we felt that a more, a more slight increase was appropriate, and to hold, and holding the heights down was important. And so, seven, five, which is RM15 versus seven, the five felt more appropriate to us as that location along that seam of those policies.
Thank you. That's helpful. And I don't know if this question can go to staff or the applicant, but you mentioned that you did present that option to revise the application to meet kind of what the concerns that the planning staff had. Was there a reason given as to why the applicant was uninterested in redo, in amending that?
He definitely outlined that in his, in his written, yes. I mean, he was just interested in having the seven units.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Will need a motion? Is there a motion?
On the staff recommendation.
On the staff recommendation, yes. Is there? Commissioner Dundon? Is there, Commissioner Dunedin? It would be a, so Commissioner Dunedin, it would be to approve the RM fifteen instead of the RM twenty.
So, so I, I move to adopt staff's recommendation to disapprove the RM twenty ANS and approve RM fifteen ANS.
That's an, that's an appropriate motion. It's a proper motion. The second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Those no, ayes have it, and staff recommendation is to approve RM fifteen. All right, so that leads us to, we're gonna take a about a ten, fifteen-minute break and then we will be back, and I apologize for that, but, um, the commissioners, uh, will need a break, and thank you.
One second, not one minute, not one second. I want to be literal. All right, we'll go ahead and start back up, and we are on item number forty-five. And we are going to have the presentation. But Lisa, so usually we do zoning and subdivision items, and then sometimes we have special studies that we do. We do like the general plan. We do lots of different studies sometimes, but this is a little, it's more of a technical study, and we just changed our rules to allow us to do some of these more technical studies on growth and development and items of concern in our community. And so Lisa, if you could just kind of give us a breakdown a little bit before we get into the about technical studies.
Sure. As you all will recall, back in October, you amended and adopted new rules and procedures that outlined a procedure for technical studies such as this. And these are sort of specialized studies that are different from our normal community plan amendment studies where we might be looking at changing a policy area. So these are more detailed technical studies where we're asking experts to come and help us solve a particular problem or analyze a particular situation. With the change in the rules, you all set up a process by which you would decide with technical studies whether or not to have a public hearing. In this case, at the last meeting, you all did vote to have a public hearing for this item. That will happen immediately after the presentation from staff. Typically, for public hearings, you all will hear from an applicant and then supporters and then opponents. In this case, because this is different, there is not necessarily an applicant, the public hearing will be held in just a slightly different manner. Immediately following the presentation, we will open the public hearing and everyone will be able to have two minutes, unless they did, unless they were an organization that requested five minutes in advance of the meeting. We did have three organizations that requested five minutes, and so they will be granted that time. We will not be splitting up the public hearing into opposition or support, given the nature of the study, and that these are just different than a rezoning, for instance. And so the public hearing will just be an open, open public hearing, and everyone will speak sort of at one time. As a reminder to everyone, they don't necessarily have to give their exact address during the public hearing. It is just a statement of location. You can be as general as you want. I'm Lisa. I live in Nashville, or more specific, if you want to name your neighborhood. That is something that we also changed recently with the adoption of the rules. After the public hearing is held and closed, we will be asking you to adopt the recommendations as outlined in the staff report and the study.
Thank you, Lisa. And we just, I thought it was important that the commissioners feel comfortable. Any questions for Lisa on the process? Okay, perfect, commissioners. All right, let's, let's have the presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Harriet Brooks. I'm the project planner for the Bellemeade Highlands Design and Mobility Study. This project encompasses two scales of work. First, there's a large corridor scale opportunity to integrate the cultural and natural resources of southwest Davison County through a reorientation towards State Route 100 as a multimodal scenic parkway, and that's represented by the larger scale map. And second, there's a much smaller scale consideration of mobility within the neighborhood of Bellemeade Highlands, specifically the challenges related to Cheekwood's landlocked position or lack of access to an arterial road, the legal and operational constraints associated with an existing parking agreement between Cheekwood and Metro Parks, and negative effects of unsustainable traffic and parking volumes on the neighborhood and Percy Warner Park. The requests before you today are specifically related to this smaller neighborhood scale and the recommendations that comprise the Bellemeade Highlands Design and Mobility Study Implementation Plan. We have three requests for you, and they're as follows. First, to adopt the Bellemeade Highlands Design and Mobility Study Implementation Plan, including the proposed recommendations, conditions, and progressive performance benchmarks for any new parking agreement between Cheekwood Botanic Gardens and Metro Parks. Secondly, to direct planning commission staff to coordinate with applicable bodies, including Metro Parks, NDOT, the city of Bellemeade, and Cheekwood to effectuate the recommendations and provisions of the plan. And lastly, to find a public interest in the establishment of new State Route 100 access near the northern portion of Percy Warner Park. And with that, I'll lead you through the study, starting with a background. So originally, or not originally, but during the nineteenth century, this entire study area was part of the Bellemeade State. In nineteen oh six, the Bellemeade State was dispersed and sold to various individuals and land development companies. In nineteen twenty-seven, Luke and Percy Warner Lee donated eight hundred and seventeen acres of Bellemeade land for the creation of a public park. In nineteen twenty-nine, Leslie Cheek bought one hundred acres immediately north of Percy Warner Park, so they share a boundary. In nineteen fifty-nine, the Cheek property was deeded to create the Botanical Garden, which opened in nineteen sixty. Throughout nineteen sixty to nineteen eighty, the study area developed from agricultural land to a more established residential neighborhood. And as that development took place, Cheekwood became reliant on neighborhood roads for access, as you can see on the image of on the right. In nineteen eighty-one, there was an initial five-year agreement that allowed Cheekwood to use an overflow lot on the park. And then that agreement was renewed several times in the intervening years. In twenty fifteen, a new five-year agreement was reached that included both what's known as the overflow lot or the east lot and this west lot, which is referred to as a slash dump. And in this case, Cheekwood and Percy Warner's Park's popularity continued to increase over time. It really began to ramp up about this time. In twenty twenty-two, Cheekwood presented plans for a parking garage on its property, but that was met with a lot of resistance from the neighborhood who were concerned about impacts ranging from noise from the blast of a parking garage to the impact, stormwater impacts, and a range of other issues. And so in twenty twenty-three, former Mayor Cooper's administration commissioned Metro Planning for a technical study related to mobility in and around this neighborhood. And in March twenty twenty-four, Metro Planning hired the consultant team led by Kim Lee Horn to help us with the technical analysis and recommendations for this project. And so that gets us to March of twenty twenty-four of last year, when we kicked off the technical planning study for this project. And given the sensitivities of the project and the significance of the historic and cultural landscapes here, it was really important that we approached the project with very objective, data-driven analysis and a real emphasis on professional best practices. And so that was critical to our approach. We, we and the consultant team analyzed several different types of data from kind of baseline conditions of topography and soils and zoning and that kinds of things to traffic counts that were taken at several different points throughout the study period to really understand what the traffic conditions were. There was a peer review of over twelve different cultural institutions throughout the U.S. that have kind of similar attendance numbers, and we really sought to understand how do they deal with transportation demand management and parking and access. And from, we used all of that to go through a scenario planning process to try to come up with different scenarios of what might lead to potential recommendations. We had two stakeholder advisory groups that we met with monthly throughout the process. One of those was a group comprised of other metro departments that were related to this work, so Metro Parks, NDOT, Metro Water. And then we also had a neighborhood working group that was comprised of different representatives from the neighborhood, including Cheekwood's leadership and staff, Friends of Warner Park, the Neighborhood Association, City of Bellemeade, and with often representation from Councilmember Ewing and Vice Mayor Henderson. There was also very significant engagement for this process. We, all of, almost all of our community meetings had close or exceeding a hundred attendees. They, the conversations were lively and dynamic, and we also received many dozens of emails throughout the process, and it's really been a very engaged community throughout the process. And so that has been led to, you know, really dynamic conversations. And so what did we find in, as we were going through this planning process? The, the map shown here shows the different locations where the traffic counts were taken in the, with the, trying to understand what the real traffic volumes were. And as we went through the planning process, we began to understand that this was not just kind of one planning problem, but there were three interlocking planning problems here. One is that the existing parking situation is unsustainable for all parties. And parking cannot be solved without creating arterial access. That access is really critical to solving the parking problem in this location. The lack of arterial access for Cheekwood and Percy Warner Park golf course users burdens both the users and the neighborhood. And then lastly, there are transportation demand management strategies that can be implemented immediately to alleviate pressure. So as I walk through the recommendations, you'll see that, you know, we, they fall into these categories of parking, access, and transportation demand management, because all of those are critical to finding a solution for this. I mentioned the traffic counts. So, you know, through our conversations with many of the neighbors and community members, they voiced that there was just excessive traffic volume in the neighborhood that really created safety and safety issues for both pedestrians and cyclists. And so we wanted to understand what the scale of that actually was. And as you can see here, it is significant. So our consultant team, our consultant team advised us that about one thousand trips per day is an acceptable traffic volume for a neighborhood street. And you can see many of the streets within the neighborhood far exceed that. And so Page wrote the portion of it that's within the neighborhood is seeing almost three thousand trips per day on a busy Saturday. And so the, the concerns were definitely validated regarding the traffic in the neighborhood. And we found that Cheekwood's traffic demand alone, so traffic demand just for Cheekwood, exceeds the recommended volumes for neighborhood streets. And our peer research illustrated And our peer research illustrated that comparable institutions rely on arterial access. We looked at over a dozen institutions, all of them had arterial access, except for Cheekwood. And Highway 100 is the most immediate and logical arterial connection. So then the consultant team, excuse me, asked the question, you know, if Cheekwood's traffic was diverted out of the neighborhood, you know, would we see substantial decline? And the answer was yes, there is a substantial decline. If we were to take the volume from Cheekwood and divert it out of the neighborhood, say they suddenly had arterial access, but it didn't completely solve the problem. So here are, is an example of the different access scenarios that the team analyzed. We asked them to kind of throw spaghetti against a wall and, you know, study every possible solution. And then from that, asked them to then take into account considerations such as physical constraints. There's a significant amount of topography in this neighborhood. Trying to understand the actual reduction in neighborhood traffic, you know, would this be an effective solution? We wanted to avoid shifting the burden to Cheek Road or to, you know, another neighborhood. And then there were also important considerations regarding historical landmark preservation as well as legal constraints and policy. And so taking those into consideration, this map shows just some of the, programs or, or points on, with on Cheekwood's property that we were taking into consideration. And so you can see here, there's a stream that runs through the property, there's significant topography, and then also view sheds that we were trying to take into consideration. And around that time in the study, it was kind of late summer, early August, was about the time that the Percy Warner Park Golf Course Lot reopened following a renovation that had taken, I'm not sure how long, but over a year. And, and so that gave us an opportunity to take a look at, you know, how the golf course reopening was affecting the neighborhood's traffic as well. We started to receive comments from the neighborhood that after the golf course reopened, that there was a significant increase in the traffic, and so we wanted to understand that better. And we found that, yes, the Percy Warner Park Golf Course Lot traffic alone also exceeds recommended volumes for neighborhood streets at, at some points. And I think it's important to note that the golf course lot is not just used by golfers, it's also heavily utilized by mountain bike and trail users and others. And so similarly, arterial access could reduce the traffic burden on the neighborhood, because right now, it's all coming kind of through Forest Park Drive, through that neighborhood street. And Highway 100 is the most immediate and logical arterial connection. So if we take all of that together, we can see through our analysis that it suggests a significant public benefit to rerouting Cheekwood and Percy Warner Park Golf Course Lot traffic out of the neighborhood. I've highlighted Page Road again in the neighborhood. And you can see here that according to these counts, it would reduce traffic by 1,500 cars per day on a Saturday, which is fairly significant if you were to reroute both Cheekwood and the park golf course lot users to an arterial. So that leads us, given kind of all of those analysis considerations, that leads us to our preferred access option. I'll note that this red dash line is not meant to be an actual road alignment or a proposal. I am not a civil engineer. But we will be asking NDOT to consider in this general location a potential access point from State Route 100 that could access Cheekwood and potentially the Percy Warner Golf Course Lot if the park's apartment finds a park's purpose for that. And this is what that access concept could look like. So that was a lot about access. I'll move now to parking. And so we had several priorities related to parking. Cheekwood is entitled to park on their property so long as it complies with Metro Code. But we were interested in trying to understand if there were some places that might lend themselves better to an arterial connection. These are all of the parking locations that we considered. Our priorities were, number one, removing Cheekwood parking from Warner Park. Again, avoiding relocating the burden to another neighborhood street. And then also, you know, trying to consider the elements of the historic landscape that, that are very significant. With that analysis, as well as taking into account topography, physical constraints, neighborhood character, improvement in neighborhood traffic and Highway 100 access, that made three of the options sort of non-viable and left us with the three that you can see here today that the study is recommending for further analysis. And then lastly, as I mentioned earlier, transportation demand management strategies can be incorporated by Cheekwood immediately to help reduce some of this burden. And this is something that our consultants found that peer institutions rely on to manage traffic volumes, but also significantly to reduce the peak times. And so if you can create flatter volume numbers and not, you know, huge peaks, then that helps as well. So with that, I will lead into the implementation plan recommendations. So as I mentioned, we are asking the commission to consider adoption of the implementation plan. And that includes integrated future work. First is a roadmap to Cheekwood's permanent parking solution. The second component of the implementation plan is that State Route 100 access analysis and implementation. And then lastly, scenic State Route 100 analysis and implementation. So the implementation plan includes recommendations that we are asking the Parks Board to consider for a future parking agreement with Cheekwood to enable them to arrive at, at parking that is no longer on Percy Warner Park land. And within that parking agreement, there are several components. One of those is a revised map. The map that has been used to date, there's been some controversy over and questions regarding it. It's not totally clear. And so we will be working with our mapping team here in Planning to create a map that's more clear and more objective. We will be asking Cheekwood to submit quarterly reports and semi-annual presentations to the Metro Parks Board. And our conversations with the Metro Parks Board, they requested kind of frequent updates on the project if they were to consider another MOU. And so that's something that we definitely want to respect. We've included within these recommendations progressive performance benchmarks in the following categories of access, capital planning and fundraising, design and construction, maintenance, operations and communications, and transportation demand management. And the idea here is really to ensure that there is progress being made towards this permanent parking solution. And, and so that the Parks Board will be able to see that the progress is being made in a timely manner. But it also enables, to enable Cheekwood to be able to do that without creating an undue, undue burden or, or too much. So, and then lastly, we have documentation requirements that are related to those performance benchmarks. And so it looks something like this. We are asking immediately that Cheekwood begin to develop onsite parking and transportation demand management solutions. You see listed here on the right, some near-term actions that we are recommending. That includes a parking management plan, that includes prebooking, paid parking, and time-based entry. We're asking them to begin to develop a transportation demand management plan that may include remote parking with shuttle service and a ride-share policy. We're asking them to begin to develop a fundraising strategy to secure their design contractors and to begin to evaluate, evaluate State Route 100 access. In March 2025, the existing MOU will expire. And so at that point, we are recommending that the Parks Board create a new MOU with provisions and benchmarks that are outlined in the implementation plan. Additionally, we are asking, we are recommending that they include the updated and precise, precise map that is being created by the staff mapping team. Cheekwood will provide a schedule of performance for year one tasks and milestones to include in the new MOU. And then Cheekwood will also execute the provisions and submit documentation back appropriate deadline. And I am giving the kind of overarching bullet points of this. The implementation plan has all of these benchmarks and provisions outlined in detail, and those were attached to your staff report. So it, it's our understanding that this first year will be, will be really important. You know, it is, at that point, we understand that, you know, it won't be, the project will not be complete. But we're recommending that Metro Parks establish another MOU in 2026 only if the year one provisions are verified. And so, you know, with the hope being that good and verifiable progress is made in that first year and to the Parks Board's satisfaction, and then in year two, another MOU could be created that would accommodate the duration of construction. Once construction commences, it should be pursued continuously. And Metro will, in good faith, consider extensions in the event of foreseeing complications or delay, that delay otherwise timely progress that's being made. And so this is where the, the parking kind of intersects with the access in terms of the timeline. Because we are, at the same time, we will be asking NDOT to undertake a technical analysis of State Route 100 access. And so at some point, you know, there will be a time where Cheekwood's parking and the Highway 100 access will need to come together. And so we have in here this, a recommendation that the Highway 100 access point in alignment be determined through NDOT analysis. And that moves into the State Route 100 access recommendations. And so what we are recommending is further technical analysis of a State Route 100 access. So we will be asking NDOT to look at access, alignment, feasibility, and implementation considerations, including capital improvement considerations and other items of that nature. We'll be asking Metro Parks to consider the potential benefit to parks users for this access. Our study has suggested that there is a potential park benefit to State Route 100 access near the northern portion of Percy Warner Park. But we are recommending that Metro Parks also take that under consideration and verify it and work with NDOT to consider if there is a park's purpose, you know, where, where that should occur. And then lastly, we're also asking Cheekwood to consider the feasibility of State Route 100 access and coordinate with NDOT on the parking option and alignment with that access. There are, there are significant considerations with the creation of this new access. And so, you know, we understand that there is significant work ahead. We do, the study suggests that new access will reduce neighborhood traffic impacts. But there's still careful coordination between NDOT and Parks Board and Cheekwood to bring this to fruition. And in addition, there are potential legal and functional constraints that might be encountered throughout this process. So that is why we're asking NDOT to conduct technical analysis and then prepare final assessment. That should be presented to the administration and Metro Council for any capital improvements considerations and, and also to Parks Board. And then lastly, we are also recommending that NDOT evaluate the scenic State Route 100 multimodal parkway idea. This really builds upon recommendations from Plan to Play, Nashville Next, Access Nashville, and then also Choose How You Move, most recently, to knit together parks, prioritize active transportation and alternative transportation. And we see here a real, real potential towards improving the multimodal, multimodal infrastructure along State Route 100 and reorienting towards that highway as an opportunity to reduce some of these conflicts between neighborhoods and tourist destinations or highly visited destinations, State Route 100. Also is a primary access for Belmead Estate and other significant sites. And so it's a really beautiful route. And there's also lots of significant park access there. And so this reorientation presents a real opportunity to link some of these significant cultural and natural community assets. And lastly, I'll end with just a few considerations. And these are kind of pillars that are critical to understanding and analyzing this study. One of those is that Cheekwood and Percy Warner Park are both significant cultural and historical landscapes that are worthy of protection, preservation, and consideration. Secondly, Cheekwood's parking must be moved off Percy Warner Park to ensure conformity with Metro's mission for its public parks and also to reduce unsustainable impacts on the park's land that have resulted from many years of overflow parking. Cheekwood may construct parking on its property so long as it complies with Metro Code. State law empowers the Metro Planning Commission to manage growth through the establishment of new streets and intersections. And lastly, Metro Planning Commission can adopt technical studies and recommend that implementation departments such as Metro Parks and NDOT act upon them. And with that, I will conclude. Again, these are the three requests before you tonight. The first is to adopt the Belmead Highlands Design and Mobility Study Implementation Plan. The second is to find public interest in the establishment of a new State Route 100 access near the northern portion of Percy Warner Park. portion of Percy Warner Park property. And third is to direct MP Metro Planning Commission staff to coordinate with applicable bodies, including Metro Parks, NDOT, and Cheekwood to effectuate the recommendations and provisions of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to thank uh the team for working on this project, and as you can see, a lot of thought went into it. And this is uh um another public hearing for this particular purpose, but the director just needs to add a few things. But I really, really appreciate um the team working on it, and I know that um a lot of work has gone into it. So, thank you.
Harriet's done an excellent job um with this project, and you'll find um on the opening staff report page sort of the recommendations that that Harriet highlighted. And one, just to clarify um on the recommendation about the Highway one hundred access, through this work, um we identified an alignment that we think is is an alignment that's worthy of additional review. It's a preferred alignment because we think it meets a number of goals, but we haven't done a level of technical study and analysis sufficient for a final determination. And so we've asked NDOT to evaluate that alignment plus the three or four others that we identified in the process and any others that NDOT, you know, deems necessary based on their work. So we can talk about that in the discussion, but I want to be clear that when you see dotted lines, often people see streets. And that what we need NDOT to do is is look in this area. We've identified some some areas that we think are most appropriate, but NDOT needs to do that more detailed analysis. So there, what we're recommending is a process for them to continue to work and refine the recommendations, and that will be stakeholder driven. We're not recommending a specific alignment today. We are not recommending a specific alignment today. So but we do think Highway one hundred access is really crucial. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. And so Commissioners, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And and as uh Lisa stated earlier, that this particular hearing is going to be all together. So uh if everybody would start lining up, um I want to remind everybody that professionalism and politeness is something that is sacred to this body. And we want everybody, we want to hear everybody, and we want everybody to have their time. Um and I think that that's important for everyone to get a chance to speak in a professional manner and debate. And and we want to hear your thoughts. And so I appreciate that very much. And so everybody gets two minutes unless uh you're one of the uh groups for five that that has requested prior per our rules, uh per the Planning Commission rules for public hearing, five minutes. And so um like you said, Lisa said, state your name. The timer is back working, I believe. We hope. Okay. Um and so if everybody will start lining up, and we appreciate everybody coming down. Who wants to go first? Don't be shy. I know, I know a lot of you are not shy. Come on up. If everybody start lining up, yeah, come on. Welcome.
Oh, welcome. I didn't say whoa.
No, welcome. Whoa.
And I'm one of the, I'm one of the parties that requested the five minutes. Oh, perfect. All right. Thank you very much. My name is Ronald Roberts, and I am currently the Board Chair for Cheekwood. And on behalf of our entire board, I want to thank you, I want to thank Metro Planning Department for all of your leadership throughout this neighborhood study process. When I look at all that work that had been done, it it was like, wow. It was loud. So really, I appreciate the work. We appreciate the work that was done because a lot of time and effort went into that. So we thank you for that. As trustees of Cheekwood, our top priorities, one of our top priorities is Cheekwood's long term sustainability. And a lot of the plan that you laid out really uh addresses that. Over the last few years, we've made significant investments in community outreach and programming that has drawn in new and diverse audiences. And that's something we're very proud of. Some of those programs include El Dia, which is the Day of the Dead, Japanese Moon viewing, Black Arts Bash, and Holi, which is the Indian celebration of colors. We're very proud of that because what it has done is it really increased Cheekwood's uh access to our community because Cheekwood is truly a community asset. So we're very proud of those things. But we also have our traditional uh celebrations such as the recently concluded Holiday Lights and Harvest. We're also proud of our relationship with Metro Schools through programs such as Cheekwood Grows and Destination Cheekwood. In fact, in twenty twenty four, we provided free admission to thirteen thousand Metro School students. Thirteen thousand Metro School students. That's something that's very important to Cheekwood. Today, Cheekwood is the third highest uh attended destination in Nashville, and it continues to be a treasured community asset. But I do want to point out something that's really important. Cheekwood is a nonprofit organization. We are not a commercial organization. We're not a pro uh pro for profit organization. Cheekwood is a nonprofit organization. Every dollar that we raised goes back into the upkeep, programming, and operations for our guests. Every dollar. So it's important to point out that we are a nonprofit organization. With sixty percent of our operating revenue tied directly to admissions, ensuring our guests have safe and reliable, a safe and reliable place to park is important. And again, the report states that out. While our attendance hit a peak in twenty twenty one during COVID of four hundred and twenty five thousand, that is not the norm. In twenty twenty four, our attendance went back to where it usually is around three hundred and seventy five thousand. We're not looking to grow attendance. That is not our objective. That is not our goal. What we want to do is to maintain our usual attendance so that we can continue to be financially sustainable. So again, we're not trying to grow Cheekwood. We are a non for profit organization. We're very supportive, and I almost could have saved all my time because we're very supportive of the plan that's been presented. We're very supportive of the plan that's been presented and the recommendations that have been proposed. We see that as a critical step towards long term solutions that would benefit the entire neighborhood and basically the Nashville community. I did want to quickly highlight a few aspects that I believe are particularly important. First and foremost, please know that we are fully committed, fully committed to developing and implementing parking solutions on our property. We know that's important. We know that needs to be done, and we are fully committed to getting that done. We greatly value our long term partnership with Metro Parks. We truly do. They have been an outstanding partner, and we hope we can continue that. We appreciate that the plan that's been presented recognizes the need for the continuation of our MOU with Metro Parks. And we are fully prepared uh because we do agree in the accountability provisions. We welcome those, and we're fully intend to meet those while we urgently work to develop and implement solutions on our property. The continued use of these overflow spaces per our MOU will be specifically critical as we're developing and fundraising for the parking on our property. That will be very beneficial to us. For example, the West Lot, which we have used with Metro's permission since two thousand and fifteen, is used only on our busiest nights for overflow parking, and that would include, and that's about eighty five nights a year. And those nights are usually during Holiday Lights and our other large community events and cultural festivals. While this is a small number of nights, less than a quarter of the year, these nights are essential to our financial sustainability, especially as we're fundraising to build parking onsite. We're also strongly supportive of the proposed road off Highway one hundred for visitors to Cheekwood and Warner Parks facilities. We believe that, and you've shown that that would significantly and dramatically reduce traffic in the neighborhood, and we know that's important to the neighbors. And last but not least, we're deeply appreciative of the study's acknowledgement of our historic entrance and the importance of its preservation, which the proposed Highway one hundred entrance would do. This entrance is an important part of our visitor experience and our identity as an historic landmark. I thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Welcome.
Commissioners, my name is Virginia Lazerty, and I live at one twenty one Page Road in Bellmead Highlands, and I'm a member of the Cheekwood Board of Trustees. I am here to speak in favor of the plan. I have lived my life on Chickering Road, Bellmead Boulevard, and now Page Road. I support the park through the Friends of Warner Park and the Eric Roy Steepwood Chase. My mother was a friend of the Cheeks and was a member of the Cheekwood, member of Cheekwood. I follow in her footsteps and have seen Cheekwood grow to be the third most popular place to visit. This Highway one hundred entrance plan addresses the traffic and parking issues, takes track traffic off neighborhood streets, enhances Percy Warner Park's ability to provide the public better access to its trails, takes Cheekwood's visitors directly to Bryant Fleming's main gate into onsite parking, which Cheekwood will be undertaking. This will be a public private collaboration of a project to support and improve two institutions to have the same mission, to give the public improved access to two Nashville treasures. I am happy to live with the timeline. These two institutions are not just for those who live near it, but for the entire city, its inhabitants, and its visitors. As a neighbor, I invite everyone to the two institutions to enjoy them as I do. I quote from a book, A History of Nashville's Warner Parks. Born only a year apart, land siblings Warner Park twenty seven, Cheekwood twenty eight, continue a mutually supportive relationship by protecting each other. Approaching a century later, nature lovers Leslie Cheek Senior and Warner Brothers, the Warner Brothers would be so pleased to see their longstanding visions enduring and still sharing adjacent pieces of earth. Metro Parks representing the Warner Brothers, Cheekwood representing Leslie Chirk Senior, can together continue to mutually supportive relationship as soon as the plan is approved. We look forward to working with Friends of Warner Park and Metro to get this done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners and staff for your service. My name is Jane McLeod. I live on Brookfield Avenue in Bellmead Highlands, and I have had the honor of serving as President and CEO of Cheekwood since twenty ten. As Tennessee State historian, Dr. Carol Van West has stated, Cheekwood is, quote, Tennessee's most exceptional example of a country place era estate. Charles Bernbaum, president of the Cultural Landscape Foundation, lodged Cheekwood as one of the nation's finest remaining country place era estates. Cheekwood, constructed between nineteen twenty nine and nineteen thirty two, is listed on the National Register of Historic Places and is under consideration for application for a national historic landmark designation by the National Park Service, a reflection of its importance not just to Nashville or Tennessee, but to the entire country. We are deeply grateful to Metro Parks for allowing us to use adjacent land for parking, and we are fully committed to the recommendations of the Metro Planning Department, including moving parking onto Cheekwood's property and the creation of a Highway one hundred access to Cheekwood and Park facilities. We support the Highway one hundred access as a solution to remove the traffic from neighborhood streets. The recommended route does this, and it preserves Cheekwood historic entrance. The historic gates are not just a way into Cheekwood. They are the heart of the visitor's journey. Landscape historian Suzanne Turner describes the entry drive as, quote, "the literal spine, the critical character defining feature of the property." She contends, quote, "Excluding the front entrance would significantly erode the historic integrity of the state and have an adverse effect on the legally established historical significance of the property," unquote. To lose the gates as a primary point of entry would be to lose a part of Cheekwood's soul. We embrace the opportunity to improve accessibility of Cheekwood, but in a way that preserves its historic integrity. We believe the recommendations of Metro Planning will accomplish this, and we hope that you will vote to adopt it.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Um my name is Heather Eady. I'm the experiential learning coordinator for STEAM Expeditions for Metro Nashville Public Schools. And what that means is I coordinate um field trips for students every year at, twice a year for over forty schools in Metro Nashville Public Schools, and Cheekwood is one of our um supporters and partners in this, and we're very fortunate to have them. Um I've lived in the city for over twenty years, and it's been one of my favorite places to to go and to visit. And very fortunate that I can now schedule students to go there. They've been a fabulous partner, providing free access and programming to our students. As you heard before, thirteen thousand students a year, Metro Public School students, get to go to Cheekwood and experience the great outdoors and study science and earth and um and the environment here in our city. And every year, I'm told by students and teachers, this is not a place I've ever been before. I didn't know this was here. I didn't know this was a part of my city. I didn't know I could come here. And um it just brings me great joy that we can partner with Cheekwood and bring our students um to these um jewels of our city. So I just wanted to share my support for Cheekwood and um hope we can continue to bring students there and provide them with the gift of all the wonderful things Nashville has. So um thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Andrea Arnold with the Nashville Convention and Visitors Corporation. I want to thank you tonight for the opportunity to speak for a couple of minutes and share our thoughts on this plan on behalf of the Nashville hospitality industry. Hospitality is obviously, as you hopefully know, is an extremely robust industry in our city. It's the second largest and provides a critical source of revenue, tax revenue for our city. Cheekwood is one of our premier attractions in our town. We're very, very fortunate to have something this unique. It's been a driver for many years uh to bring visitors to come to Nashville. It's a key asset as we work to grow and diversify uh the visitors who come to Nashville as well. It's it's very, visitors are always looking for something new and different to experience. And Cheekwood, both as a standalone attraction and through um the events and programming, many of which you heard Mr. Roberts reference earlier, it provides that very unique experience. Um and it's one that's especially sought after for those cultural tourism enthusiasts who are coming to town. So thank you very much for conducting this study. And we support all of the recommendations that are made in it, and they feel they are very uh well formulated and sound. And we specifically also want to add our voice to those who've said it before to show um support uh for the proposed idea to consider the new road off Highway one hundred. We think this will greatly ease the traffic congestion for everyone who enjoys all of the assets in the neighborhood. So thank you again for your time tonight, and also thank each of you for your service to our city.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening. My name is Arcelia Vazquez. I live in Nashville. I've been um part of the committee for El Dia de los Muertos um the last sixteen years. And um I am really, really proud of this event, the cultural event. It um gets a lot of um diversity, and especially I'm proud because it has helped to reconnect with the roots of the um or Hispanic um traditions. And Cheekwood has been the host for this event the last twenty five years. And it is the largest um event, Hispanic cultural event that it has very rich, authentic, and colorful that you can find in Nashville, and and it's getting so famous. It's getting like all around Nashville. It's coming. And we have the participation of several, several um high schools. Like um not only um it's great to see younger generations learning from um other cultures, but at the same time that enjoying in have the participation. I really appreciate um that your service and that you take um like um in in consideration all these recommendations because I I support all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners and staff. Um my name is Mimi Vaughn. I'm the Board Chair, President, and Chief Executive Officer of Genesco Inc. and a member of Cheekwood's Board of Directors. And for those of you, uh Genesco has been an important part of the Nashville community. We just celebrated our century anniversary. We have eighteen thousand employees. And I got to know Cheekwood when I first moved to Nashville. I've lived in Nashville for twenty five years. My husband's a native Nashvillian. My mother's from Jamaica. My father is from Trinidad, and uh the beauty of nature is more accessible and to all people uh in the tropics, no matter your level of income or your background. And my parents were drawn to Cheekwood's gardens and felt welcomed to Nashville because of Cheekwood's presence. I have four daughters, and uh Cheekwood allowed me to introduce my children to the beauty of nature and art. If you've gone to the Jaime Plensa exhibit, you'll never forget it at Cheekwood. It was really incredible. Earlier this year, Genesco was honored to serve as the lead sponsor for Trolls, which was an exhibit at Cheekwood. Uh there were six huge trolls made out of recycled materials. That was an amazing storytelling experience. Each troll had a name, a personality, and was built, as I said, out of repurposed materials. The messages of sustainability uh were a big reason we decided to support this exhibit, and it really overlaps with what we're doing in our sustainability efforts at Genesco. We had a wonderful employee event. Seven hundred of our twelve hundred local employees attended, many of whom are from Nashville and have never been to Cheekwood. It was extraordinary for me, and I welcomed every single one of them to invite them to Cheekwood and to have them uh discover the great treasure that Cheekwood is. Whether young or old or um you looking for nature or art, it is a treasure. I want to thank you for the I want to thank you for the extensive work that you've put into this study. And as a board, we're excited and committed to supporting this. We will see it through, and please support this recommendation. I'm talking here in support of this recommendations, which I believe will benefit both the neighborhood and Cheekwood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Wells. I'm the Market President for Truist here in Nashville and also a member of the Cheekwood Board of Directors. And Truist has been the presenting sponsor of the Holiday Lights program that you've heard about since 2021. And it's become a beloved Nashville holiday tradition. And that's why we decided to sponsor it, is because of the joy it brings fellow Nashvillians. As a banker and a board member, I know firsthand how important safe and reliable visitor parking to Cheekwood's long-term financial stability is. And Truist has served as Cheekwood's financial partner for many, many years. And my colleagues and I have seen firsthand the effort that the institution and leadership have put forth to make Cheekwood the financially sustainable nonprofit it is today. The primary driver of its turnaround has been the increase in consistency of paid attendance via community events like Holiday Lights and other events that you've heard about already tonight. During COVID, Truist was so impressed with the institution's resiliency in serving the community during a time when places like Cheekwood were especially important, that it was featured in our annual report. I want to thank and commend the Metro Planning for its leadership throughout the neighborhood study process and for the considerable time and effort that went into developing these recommendations. These recommendations are exciting, and I believe on the right track. I also want to thank and acknowledge Cheekwood's longtime partner, as Ronald said, the Metro's Park Department, for their continued support and the continued use of the West Parking Lot via our MOU that makes events like Lights possible. We are so appreciative. I hope that you will support a longtime solution that ensures Cheekwood remains a safe and accessible place for all to visit and enjoy for events like Holiday Lights and throughout the year. Thank you for your time and attention, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for your time serving our fine city. This study is a little bit new to me. I just found out about it within the last 48 hours. I frequent the park, often making use of the mountain biking trails there. I understand firsthand the traffic and parking issues in that area. I also understand that at this point, it's still a work in progress. We don't really know exactly where that proposed road might go, right? I think it's important to understand, you know, devil's kind of in the details there. We haven't yet quantified what are the negatives to the park of running a road through there. You know, you all are tasked with the unenviable task of managing growth in this city. And one of the challenges of that is preserving park space. So while I think that access from 100 makes a lot of sense, I'm very cautious about bringing that through the park. I think there's some other options in there. I don't know if we can go back to them, numbers four and five, of Cheekwood maybe acquiring some other properties to get access. You know, there's some fantastic trails in that area of the park that, as I look at it, would have to be destroyed to put a road through there. I was picking my daughter up on the way home from school today. I said, you know, that we might lose Hookman Trail in Percy Warner Park. And when she got over her shock, I said, you know, what would you tell the Commissioners about that? And she said that, you know, it's not my favorite trail because it's really challenging. But, you know, if we lost Hookman Park, like the riders in Nashville, we're just not going to do nearly as well as the riders in Chattanooga or Knoxville without that trail. It really is a gem. It's the best trail of single tracks in this area of town. So anyhow, I hope that can be studied very carefully as you all proceed and appreciate your service to our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you for your time. I'm Caitlin Mooney. I'm a sports medicine physician here in Nashville, and I'm also a youth mountain biking coach. So I also recently moved back here after being away for 10 years. So I do appreciate the change in traffic in this area. And I do think that's something that does need to be solved, and I appreciate all your hard work with this. But just like the last speaker, I want to highlight what a gem the Percy Warner Park trails are for the mountain biking community. There isn't a lot of mountain biking trails in the Nashville public metro area. And if we lost some of these trails, we would, a lot of local youth riders who use that for their practice facility would not have access to trails, so we would lose teams. And I would like to also highlight that a lot of our participants do not participate in other more conventional sports. And this is a way that a lot of youth have access to physical activity and recreational time with other youth. Additionally, I just love Percy Warner Park and its trails, and I think that would be a big loss. So I hope that the mountain biking trails are at least thought about during planning. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bo Tyler. I'm the Board Chairman of Friends of Warner Parks, a nonprofit organization whose mission it is to steward, preserve, and protect the Warner Parks system. Really appreciate this opportunity to speak on behalf of our board. I'd like to start by saying thank you to the planning staff for their hard work in generating the Bellmead Highlands Report. They've done an excellent job in engaging the various stakeholders. And intentionally, they have conducted what we consider to be a fully community-led process. We appreciate that the planning staff, the Planning Commission, and Metro have a shared interest, along with our community, to protect and preserve the Warner Parks. And we are thankful that Planning has invited Friends of Warner Parks to have a seat at the table as the city makes decisions about specific policies that will emerge from this plan. On the Bellmead Highlands Design and Mobility Report for you today, please know that it has the support of the Friends of Warner Parks. We support the report's recommendation that Percy Warner Park no longer be used for parking by Cheekwood and that there be an accountable plan for Cheekwood to solve its parking concern. And that in time, this parkland will be, as it was intended, exclusively for public park use. We agree there should be a structured, enforceable MOU that includes benchmarks and a deadline for Cheekwood to establish on-premise parking and to vacate the park. Friends supports an alternative access point for Cheekwood's parking needs. I do want to say that we have concerns about any option of a Highway 100 access road that potentially routes through the Warner Parks. And it would have adverse impacts to our environment or to programming such as the popular mountain bike trails, which you just heard about. And we would want those considerations to be one of the priorities as Parks conducts its analysis for the access. Further regarding the alternative access recommendation, an alternative access on Highway 100 should be a separate process from Cheekwood's departing the park and parking on its own process. Cheekwood's parking solution should be resolved regardless of where this yet-to-be-determined road access is achieved. A new road, wherever built, should be capable of servicing their parking, but Cheekwood's parking solution should not be dependent upon it in order for them to solve their parking demands. All potential access points identified in the study need to be investigated thoroughly for their viability to solve the access needs, not solely the access option along the park border. This process also needs to allow for further investigation into the park's needs for additional Highway 100 access. We understand that the consideration of these issues will be a part of the next phase of the study and that there will be a collective forum in which the policy options will be addressed and investigated. Thus, Friends of Warner Parks is supportive of the adoption of the Planning Department's recommendation, and we ask that the Planning Commission take action to adopt the plan. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Adal Williford. I live on Page Road. I'm a neighbor. My wife and I have two young children, ages nine and seven. We've been on Page for about the past five and a half years. And I'm here today representing a working group that organized the Bellmead Highlands Safety Initiative. Before I say anything else, I'd like to express our group's appreciation to the Metro Planning Department and to Kimley Horn, in particular Harriet Brooks and her team, for the thorough, data-driven approach to the Bellmead Highlands Design and Mobility Study. It has been a long and at times contentious process, and without fail, that team has been professional, objective, patient, inclusive, respectful, and solutions-oriented. Thank you. First, I would like to mention that our neighborhood continues to applaud Cheekwood's success. However, we much, we very much want and demand better traffic conditions on the small roads in the Bellmead Highlands. With that in mind, we'd like to express our support of the study's following recommendations. Number one, to create Highway 100 access for Cheekwood. The reason for our support of Highway 100 access is that the traffic problems listed in the study are real. As a resident of Page Road, I can tell you that the traffic is overwhelming. 2,900 cars a day versus the 1,000 car a day recommended threshold. It's so overwhelming that over 525 adult-aged neighbors, representing nearly 70% of all neighborhood families, came together within about a month this past summer, very busy time, to lobby for a Highway 100 entrance and exit for Cheekwood. We have lots of families in this neighborhood with small children, and it is very common to look out your window and see parents walking with strollers. It really is problematic and dangerous to go for a walk on Page Road. There are cars coming and going at the same time, but day and night, and there are virtually no sidewalks. We are at the mercy of the drivers, hoping they aren't texting and driving and that they see us. And most of the drivers, 80% of them, according to the Kimley Horn study, are driving to and from Cheekwood and are unfamiliar with our neighborhood streets. The traffic presents a significant safety concern for our residents within the Bellmead Highlands. The congestion and lack of clear traffic management at the current entrance have been a growing cause of concern as Cheekwood has grown over the years. Since 2008, Cheekwood's attendance has risen from 175,000 to 400,000 annual visitors, while accessibility at Cheekwood has not changed at all. Additionally, Kimley Horns conducted a peer review of over 15, or yeah, 15 similar cultural institutions in the United States, which revealed that all had access to an arterial road like Highway 100. In light of these challenges, we strongly advocate for the development of a new entrance to Cheekwood via Highway 100. This adjustment would not only alleviate traffic and enhance safety, but also improve the overall flow and accessibility for both visitors and residents alike. Number two, we firmly believe that Cheekwood's parking needs need to be moved onto Cheekwood's own property. Cheekwood nor any other private entity should be entitled to permanently use public park land for their own needs. Additionally, we'd like to challenge one aspect of the study. While Cheekwood does have historical and cultural significance, we challenge that it necessitates arrival through the front gates where they currently are. As I mentioned, Cheekwood's attendance has more than doubled over recent years. The modern conditions that it has set up for itself should lead for them to change the way it works, including the way the public accesses its site. It could do so without diminishing the historical significance of the site or its visitor experience. It might even enhance their visitor's experience. Furthermore, it's our understanding that Cheekwood itself has not always used the Forest Park entry for public access and that public entrance was on Cheek Road from 1960 to early 1980s. We ask you to look into this as part of your further consideration. And regardless, what I'm driving at is this: How the public accesses Cheekwood grounds should not be predetermined. Rather, it should emerge through a further data-driven study of the optimal location for parking on Cheekwood's property. Please do not constrain the study's effectiveness by predetermining the direction of arrival and departure. So to conclude, we look forward to the execution of these plans as soon as possible. Our neighborhood's families also respectfully ask to remain actively involved in further discussions surrounding all these issues. We'd like a seat at the table. They have a direct impact on us every single day. We're highly confident we will play a helpful role going forward. Again, many thanks to all of you for your hard work.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, my name is Crom Tidwell. I'm here with my cousin Leah Rabino. We are two of the 15 grandchildren of Colonel Luke Lee. Our purpose here tonight is to bring attention to the deed, to the land our grandfather gifted the city of Nashville for the establishment of Percy Warner Park. We would like to remind you that the deed has restrictions, and the land can only be used as a public park. As grandchildren, whose core interest is to protect and preserve the park, our hope is the city will abide by his deed. We look forward to working through this process and resolving the issues with the Parks Board. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Sure.
Yeah, just.
Those are, I'm passing around a few pictures that are just some.
Ma'am, could you state your name?
Pictures of the, I'm sorry. I'm Virginia Bloodworth. I live on Forest Park Drive, which is the entrance to both Cheekwood and Percy Warner Park. And like the others here tonight, I want to compliment the findings from the Forest Park, Bell Park study. I support them 100%. I'd also like to say that I think many of the earlier speakers in their support of Cheekwood and the many events that happened there, cultural events, illustrate the point that the traffic that we're experiencing is an ongoing issue. It's not one or two nights a year, one or two times a year. It's ongoing. And that, just those photographs, and then there are some videos I've also posted online, show some examples of traffic. And this is supposed to be a one-way street, by the way, that we live on. So Cheekwood stated that they also, in addition to the million visitors over three years, have other things going on. And it's a steady traffic supply. And we have a lot of cushions and so forth, but it's still a steady traffic supply. We support Cheekwood's success and cultural value, but we want to emphasize that just getting the parking onto Cheekwood land, which is important and necessary, will not solve the traffic problem. And it's really important, we think, for safety and other reasons, to get the Hunwood access. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, Commissioners, my name is David Clay, and I live on Highway 100. Maybe just here to help remind you all that some people do live on Highway 100. I live between Cheek Road and Cheekwood Terrace. I've been there for 20 years. And certainly appreciate all the hard work that's gone in. We're supporters of Warner Park, of Cheekwood. We enjoy all of the activities. I know a lot of time and effort has gone into the study. The one concern or hole that I see in the study, and one of the reasons why I'd be opposed to it, is that it did not and does not take into account the impact on Highway 100. There are a lot of time and effort was spent looking at, hey, there's a lot of traffic on Page Road. There's a lot of traffic on Forest Park Drive. Yes, there is, and I would acknowledge that. But what the study seems to do is just take all of that traffic and move it to 100. And none of the materials talk about what would the increased traffic flow do? What impact does that have on the people who live in that area? We are part of Bellmead Highlands Neighborhood. So when they talk about moving the traffic out of the neighborhood, it is not. It's just moving the traffic from some neighbors and putting it on to other neighbors. So again, I realize something's going to have to be done and respectfully just request that, as Commissioners, when you deliberate things, don't forget that there are people who live on 100, and we really need to be thinking about that as we think through what does a Highway 100 access actually look like. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Keith Walker, David's neighbor. My family owns two properties right next to David. And so I won't go into a lot of things he discovered. They're very good properties. I'm also very connected, love Cheekwood. My phone is full of pictures over the last 20 years of my kids and family enjoying Cheekwood. I love Percy Warner Park. And my family is probably hard-pressed to find somebody else, another family that uses the park more than I do or our family does. Additionally, I'm also vested in it, and I'm the local trail boss for the mountain bike trails. So I donate 60 to 80 hours a year to maintain those trails and work with the crew to maintain those mountain bike trails. So I think there's a couple of voices that are missing in the study. And I think there's a lot of really good stuff in the study. There's a problem. There's definitely a traffic problem. We have to go to those parking areas and use that. Also, golfing facilities, things, I take advantage of those. But I think there's a couple of voices, and that is the resident area on Highway 100 and the mountain bike community. And I think that something else is missing from the report is there's going to be an impact to the mountain biking trails, a significant impact. And that's not reflected anywhere I've seen in the reports or in the studies that's been done. The areas over there where they're looking to put that entrance is going to cut right through the mountain bike trails, or a good portion of them. And so I think that voice needs to really be injected from here forward into the conversation. But I do think there's things that need to be done. I would also recommend that you possibly go back and look at some other parking options. Look at maybe even acquiring some property across Highway 100. There's a commercial property there and some older. There's a commercial property there and some older residential properties over there that could probably be purchased and create a parking facility over there that could easily be, have shuttles to go into the Cheekwood property through the Cheek entrance. So I think there's some things that maybe also need to be considered in that space.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Adi Vidal. I live in Hillwood, and I frequent Cheekwood, Percy Warner, the mountain biking trails. All three of those are a very big part of my life. So I'm here to speak on behalf of the nine-thousand-member mountain biking community that has not been mentioned in this report at all. So the nature of the sport puts us in the woods. Just because you don't see us does not mean we are not there. The membership has grown three thousand in three years. So it's the fastest-growing sport behind pickleball. So I'm bringing attention to Hookman Trail, which is the trail directly adjacent to Cheekwood that would be destroyed if we put a road through there. And Hookman is one-third of the Percy Warner Mountain Bike Trail. So not only is Percy Warner Mountain Bike Trail important, it's one of three trails only in Davidson County. And out of those three trails, it's the only one that is safe for a woman to ride at night. So it's very important. And if Hookman is destroyed, let's see, one-third of the trail is gone, but also the connector trail to the rest of the mountain biking community is also gone. So because of the significance of the mountain biking trail at Percy Warner, that's why I leave the women's rides there, the kids' rides there, and those memberships have grown significantly and largely because we feel safe. So that's where I wanted to bring attention to the mountain biking trails. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll make sure we get everybody. John.
Good evening, Chairman, Commission members. John Cooper with the law firm Holland and Knight, 511 Union Street. Here on behalf of Cheekwood, representing Cheekwood. You've heard many viewpoints tonight. And as we, has been said earlier, Cheekwood is fully in support of the study as it's written, and we would ask that you approve the study tonight. Again, you're not making any determination as to where a road goes. You're not granting Cheekwood any rights. This is simply adopting a study and an implementation plan that staff and the consultants have worked so hard on. Again, you've heard a concern about the Luke Lee deed and reversionary clause. We believe there is a way that this study can be implemented fully and be in compliance with the deed. But again, that's for something down the road. Right now, this is the first step in a long process to help solve the neighborhood concerns and provide parking for Cheekwood on its property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll make sure we get everybody. All right, seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. And so I do want to say thank you to Commissioner Henley, who is our Parks representative. So for those of you who don't know, Planning has always had, per the Charter, a Parks member, board member. And so I want to say thank you for all the extra work, all the extra time. He is a committed soldier to the Parks Board, and we really appreciate, seriously, it's a lot of work. And I just, we all appreciate that. So I just want to say thank you. And so I think it's appropriate to lead with you and maybe end this conversation with our Parks representative, and then we'll get to the other Commissioners once you, how about you start us off, Commissioner?
Well, thank you, Chair, and I graciously accept the kind words. It is a labor of love, but it's also something I'm extremely passionate about. And I've quite often sat here and used the time that I have to highlight the importance of our parks and our open spaces as well as the public realm as a whole to our community. I would like to thank everybody who showed up this afternoon, and especially for the words expressed to our staff and to the consultant team. I've served in those roles, and I've worked hand-in-hand with the staff, and they do a fantastic job and have many, many things that they have to juggle. But I think someone said it here and complimented them. They've been extremely professional, made additional time for questions that I've had. And I know our Parks Board has also greatly appreciated their work. So I want to just continue to echo those compliments. I think of a few things that I think are really important that have been highlighted. I think the report and the presentation from the report did a fantastic job of this. There's, oftentimes, we hear things that are usually one specific site, one specific parcel, maybe a few, and a community. But in this case, we have quite a few different stakeholders and quite a few different perspectives. And I think the reason I'm glad that we augmented our rules and allowed in our policies and procedures is because we were able to have a forum like this where we were able to hear both great things about the process, but also highlight things that we may have missed. I think as John said in his comments, you know, this is the start of something that will take quite a bit of time. I know that was part of my comments at the Parks Board is, you know, it's a challenge, it's an issue, it impacts a lot of people. And as fast as we may like to solve it, it is going to be something that will take us all working together. And there'll be several steps along the way. As, you know, wearing my Parks Board hat, I think it's extremely good to hear how much of the feedback we got that was positive and felt like all the stakeholders, as I mentioned, felt like they were engaged. I made several notes about the bike trail, and I want to thank everyone who came specifically spoke about that, as well as the comments about there are residents living on Highway One Hundred. A good friend of mine also lives on Highway One Hundred, so that's noted as well. But I just wanted to start our comments off by making that known. Again, having gained a greater understanding of what's being looked at in the study itself, have relationship with Cheekwood in the past and have worked there, so have a great fondness and understanding of that estate. And then also being a Nashville native and, you know, all through my childhood visit Percy Warner Park. So it's very personal as well. And again, consider myself a stakeholder. So, you know, as much as I'm on this side of the bench, I consider myself on that side as well. So with that being said, and again, Chair, thank you. I'm excited to continue to champion forward something that is a real issue. I mean, it really is. I mean, people have lived with this for quite a bit of time and heard from very, very, very many of the constituents about some of the challenges. So I'm excited that we've reached this point. I want to just express appreciation for all of you and many others who will be listening and are no doubt following this, that your patience as we've kind of worked to go through this process, that was a big deal and a big ask. And I'm really excited that we've gotten to this point. I know there's a lot ahead of us.
Thank you, Commissioner. And so Joni and the team have done a great job, and Ed and I really appreciate it. So any other discussion, questions, discussion, Vice Chair, and then we'll go to Commissioner Dundon. Vice Chair.
I guess I had a couple of questions. And one was just trying to figure out the timing of the criteria that gets put in place with the MOU. It does seem to me that it will be hard for Cheekwood to make a decision on the parking and move forward with the parking not having some direction on the road access. So, but it seems like in looking at the MOU that there's an expectation that they have more progress on the parking side while the road study is. And I understand why, because they need to get off the Parks land. But I guess I'm just trying to figure out how that gets reconciled. Because I would think that would be really difficult for Cheekwood to plan.
Do you want to pull that helpful exhibit up that you had that shows? You're right, I'll let Harriet answer the question in more detail. We really wanted to focus on the parking and ensure that that is addressed immediately. That's a Parks Board, you know, great concern. And so eventually, they do need to line up, but we wanted to make clear, I think one of the speakers said it well, they're separate, but you're right, eventually, they do need to marry up down the road, but the parking has to go independently. There was one that showed timing and when the access would get aligned with our thinking. And by the way, I mean, if you see things within the implementation plan that you think we could be more effective in articulating, this is a great time to let us know. If there's something else we can add that clarifies that relationship, we're very open to feedback.
Is this it?
Sure. Yes, and I can talk through this a little bit. And, you know, you've asked a really great question. So, you know, we are asking both Cheekwood and NDOT to start immediately. And so we've already, you know, had some initial conversations with NDOT just about the sort of considerations of this type of project. And so they are, you know, aware that this could be coming. And, you know, have been very, you know, amenable to those conversations. And so, you know, we are asking NDOT, you know, to conduct its own independent analysis and also for Cheekwood to start. And we've asked that Cheekwood, as they are considering their parking, to not, you know, to be very cognizant that their solution not prohibit access from Highway One Hundred. So, and also, we show, I know, several places on the map where potential parking could take place. It doesn't need to be necessarily in one spot. You know, there might be more than one parking facility. And so there, I guess, you know, we understand that they're going to have to come together, and we're doing the best that we can to make those timelines work and not preclude an optimal solution. But it will also be, you know, up to the implementation teams to work through that coordination.
Commissioner, the other thing I would note is that new access is a really heavily regulated activity by both NDOT and TDOT is the owner of Highway One Hundred. And in all locations, new access is really about safety and integrating those access with the other functions like biking on Highway One Hundred or pedestrian activity or reducing vehicular conflicts. And in this location, it's also then going to be about environmental features, protecting natural features, historic preservation. So there are a whole host of things that will make the access discussion really technical and actually pretty challenging. And so there are a lot of factors that need to be given weight. We didn't want to stop the parking so that we could get into that. And TDOT is going to have very particular view about where the access is taking and the amount of access that we can have. And so just to level set there, there are a lot of different factors and drivers that would determine how that happens, but ultimately, we have to get TDOT concurrents. And so that's why we left the recommendation on the access more one that everybody's got to roll up their sleeves and like get to work, because that is going to be an important challenge. Metro's ready for it. We're leaning into it. We want to do this. But I want everyone to know that we can't pick a point and just say it's going to be here unilaterally. And so again, we didn't want to hold up the parking. It needs to progress independently.
That all makes sense. And I think it just then leads to, as you just said, everyone needs to be ready to roll up their sleeves and work together. It does seem like Percy Warner and Cheekwood, in my mind, are very complementary uses. I mean, and Cheekwood has done a wonderful job of preserving a lot of open space as well. So I hope that there is a way for a, you know, if there is a complementary solution there, that everyone will be open to thinking about that. Because, you know, the issues with the traffic in the neighborhood, yes, I mean, the studies make it pretty clear how much is coming from Cheekwood, but it also is very clear that there's been a big increase. And, I mean, and I can remember the tensions over the course of the last twenty years as Cheekwood, I mean, as Belmead has become so much more popular as a park, you know, that it's, that had as longstanding created issues in that neighborhood as well. So I think trying to come up with a complementary solution that works for both the park and Cheekwood is really in everyone's best interest right now. Because as Nashville grows, we need to be able to have something that's going to work for the continued growth, not just managing the status quo where we are now.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And so we'll have Commissioner Dundon and then Commissioner Clifton. Commissioner Dundon.
Thank you. So I heard a lot of support for this in the room, but maybe different means to get to sort of the end, the end. Sorry. Yeah, thanks. So I think I heard a lot of support for the outcome that this is needed, both parking and access, and then some different ideas of how maybe that should happen. And I understand the Director was clear about that we're voting on a process today. We're not deciding where a road goes. But I think, I grew up also with these parks. I share everybody's personal views about these parks and Cheekwood in particular. My mother took me to these institutions when I was young, and I took my children, and I hope my children will take their children. And the more we keep voting on density, the more important these parks and access to these parks becomes. So I think the need to keep that open space is just critical and will only get even more critical. So I just want to see that we prioritize limited impacts on both Cheekwood and the parks as they go through these changes that are needed. And so in that regard, the comment about Cheekwood constructing parking on Cheekwood property, I guess that's a, there seems to already be a parking area in the park area, Overflow Parking Lot, I think it was. And then if Cheekwood is building a new parking lot, like is there, and I know there was a deed restriction, but I'm wondering if, does that apply in the parking area? And if it doesn't, is there some, you know, can we consider potentially having that area a shared, a permanent shared access, even if we need to expand it, simply to avoid Cheekwood having to impact land that we maybe don't want to turn into a parking lot? So I guess that's my first question, is that a deed restriction issue that just can't happen in that area? So Harriet, can you pull up the map that shows our understanding of the deed-restricted areas with respect to parking? So what I'll say is, these are very, these are old documents. And so what we did was map our understanding of where the deeds are located or where the deed applies, if you will, based on the language in the deed. Again, these are historic documents, so if, you know, there may be other materials out there, and if there are, we would be happy to refine what we understand as the area of impact. But the West Lot shown here, which is the, which so-called Chipper Lot, need to come up with a slash dump, we need to come up with some better names. But the West Lot, our research indicates that that is in the area where the deed applies. However, this lighter portion to the right that covers the East Lot and the Overflow area is not, by our research, included in the Luke Lee deed area. Again, if there's other information out there, we welcome it, but this is what ours indicates. And so your second, so this is how the deed restrictions apply to the parking areas. Your question, I think, was about, repeated if you wouldn't mind. If the deed doesn't prohibit it, could it be considered that that becomes a shared parking lot? So we don't have to construct a new parking lot on open space area within Cheekwood? From sort of an environmental resilience perspective? I think what I would say is, there are a couple of issues. I think from a Parks policy perspective, Parks seeks to be able to control the land under its jurisdiction. I agree with you that, I agree with you that Cheekwood also has open spaces that are valuable. And in a way, it's good that these are adjacent, because could you imagine a major commercial development adjacent to the park or something like that, or a large residential development that would have a different feel? So we will work with Cheekwood to understand sort of where their parking is going to be placed. I appreciate why you would want to have a shared use on the East Lot. But I think that at this point, I would recommend where we.
where we have landed with the, with the, with the recommendations. The west lot is encumbered by the deed. And so, I think that does need to be looked at a little bit differently. Tom, unless you have any additional context there?
And Tom, if you'll just say your name and who you are. That way, everybody knows. Not everybody knows.
Like, share. It's one name. Yeah.
I am Tom Cross and I am the Deputy Director of Law. And I don't think I can improve much on what you said, Director, but I, I think maybe just restating it. The, the gift to the city, Parks Department in the 1920s, was of the property that is shown in the darker color. The city acquired the parcel that is shown in the li, the lighter color from a different prior owner. And so, the deed that's at issue that has the restrictions in it applies to the darker color, but not to that sawtooth. So, in theory, parks could do what it wanted to in that area, but there are some environmental considerations. And I think Director Camp is correct that they do not see that parking on that area is, you know, consistent with their long-term mission.
That makes sense. Thank you. Yeah. And then I guess the other question about the access road. It sounds like the parks, at least the Friends of Warner parks, are not in favor of that particular access road in that, in that location, which is not a determined location, as I understand. If, does, can Metro help Cheekwood in some way? Take that land and, and force Cheekwood to have access on a particular area where they want it? Or how, how do we address the access issue if, if, if the, the park is not in agreement on the road?
So, let me answer the first question and I'll look to Tom again, maybe. But to the first question, I think that my hope is that through a collaborative stakeholder-driven technical process, we are able to work through the pros and cons of all the access, which again, is heavily regulated process. And, and, and we are recommending that parks do an evaluation of its long-term plan and really think about how the west lot and the east lot are gonna function in the future. And we believe that Highway 100 access could be beneficial. And so, we're giving NDOT the latitude to determine whether those access points are shared or independent. We're not inserting ourselves into that yet. But I can share with you that shared access is the best practice. And from an environmental perspective, it's the one that often has the least impact if it is managed well. And I think we should give priority to natural resources and environmental impacts. But regardless of how parks evaluates that, we will work with Cheekwood through the stakeholder work. They've committed to working with us and rolling up our sleeves, or rolling up their sleeves and working on the Highway 100 access. My experience in the land development space is that when you have a private entity that has access points that meet the FIRE code, we're not able to require something of them above what the code requires. The second thing is, and I would ask Tom, can we condemn land for Cheekwood alone?
No.
No? And can Cheekwood condemn land on its own?
This is particularly important since, you know, there were several neighbors who live on Highway 100. And if you're coming off of Highway 100, you'd have to think carefully about whether you could route the road in a way that avoids private property. And yeah, if, if you're talking about a strictly public use, if the road is primarily for the, in service of the parks, which I think is likely to be the case here, you could. That would be a last resort, but we couldn't condemn strictly for a driveway for some private entity.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And I, I just, I think this is a really unique place 'cause we do have these two uses next door to each other that are both really sustainably natural and, you know, treasures to the community, but also both open spaces. So, the more we can prioritize, you know, lack of environmental impacts, the more supportive I would be.
And, and that's really the secret sauce to both of the successes for both entities, right? Is that? And, you know, one can't, I, I believe one can't exist without the other. But that's just, hopefully, we'll get to a good point. All right. Commissioner Clifton?
Just a question about process. I've actually been here before. I should know about this. Are we leading up to someone suggesting a vote on a course of action tonight that makes the statement that the Highway 100 access is the way we're going? 'Cause I don't think we are, but I just wanna be sure.
We're recommending.
At this early date, for me at least.
Yeah. We're, you have authority under state law as a commission to manage growth through the establishment of new access points, new infrastructure and the like. You are really the only body in Metro that can do that. We're recommending that you find a public interest in the establishment of new Highway 100 access. But we don't have a sufficient level of information to tell you where. And we need input from parks as well as Cheekwood and residents and others who have, you know, concerns in the area for where that is and how that access functions. So, we're asking you to recommend that you think Highway 100 access is needed? And we are directing NDOT to go and pursue further detailed analysis about where, how many access points, how it functions and the like. So, yes, you're giving guidance. You're not saying where.
Except, except we are saying with what you're thinking, that the vote, that the motion might be, we are saying that there has to be a Highway 100 solution to this in some way.
There needs to be, we, we believe that the impacts to the neighborhood streets are unsustainable and unreasonable at the level that they are today. And fundamentally, Commissioner, I mean, in my mind, this is about looking at a, at a part of town that has such phenomenal open space, natural resources and tourism-oriented uses and balancing those with a residential character that's there today and, and needs to have a voice and needs to have an opportunity to be balanced. And think about the first two cases that we heard today about density and how important these resources are for our city to make sure that we have open space in our community. But it has, their impact has to be balanced. And so, yes, we, we don't think the current condition is acceptable. We think Highway 100 access is needed.
Good to know. I, I'm unconvinced that I know enough right at this moment to tell all these people who are extremely worried and articulate about the Highway 100 solution as the solution. I'm unwilling to vote for it tonight, but that's just me.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Vice Chair, hold on. Let's have everybody else. And then we'll get back to you. But Commissioner Smith, and then we'll get back to Vice Chair.
Very quick. I think, I think most of my thoughts have already been said by everyone else. I'm, I'm very inclined to support the, the process. I do think that Highway 100 access would be beneficial and in the public interest. We're big fans of Cheekwood and members. I, I would hope as, as we do get closer to actually making that determination, it sounds like there is an affected party or stakeholder that, that hopefully can be more looped in and, and, and the mountain biking community and some form of, you know, maybe more trails if, if those ones get disrupted or whatnot. I'm unfamiliar. I'm more on the golf side, though very, very bad at that. But that, that's, I hope they, they can be looped in in some form or fashion. It seems like they, they have, they have a passion and, and obviously a stake there. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Counsel lady and then Vice Chair. Counsel lady?
Thank you, Chair. I, I'll have to share Commissioner Clifton's sentiment in that I don't know enough to know what should be done. But I will say that I'm ready to move forward with this tonight because I have great confidence in Commissioner Henley and his position with the parks and, and his listening to the comments today and making note and taking that back. And I feel that because we have that great person on our commission as well as working with the staff, that those things will be considered. And so, because we're not making a recommendation of where the road is gonna be, but acknowledging that there needs to be some connection in some way and leaving it to the experts and all of the stakeholders to decide where that connection needs to be, I'm, I'm, I'm okay moving forward tonight. So, I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel lady. Any, so before we get to Vice Chair, anybody else that has not spoken yet? Any discussion and then we'll get back to. Oh, Commissioner Leslie? I, I gotta, I got, I, I got a weak left eye. Sorry. Go ahead. No go, Commissioner.
I think the question is, I'm, I'm trying to figure out. So, we have decided that Highway 100 is the way to go, but we just don't know at what, what the access would be to the parking lot.
Perhaps it would be helpful and, and maybe Commissioner Clifton and I could have more arti, artfully answered a, a piece of this, which is, we're asking for policy direction to do more work. This is again, a really compli, you're fine with that. Okay. This is a complicated problem. Once NDOT does the work, they're gonna engage stakeholders. They're gonna do all the environmental work needed. They're gonna look at alternatives. They're gonna evaluate multiple alternatives. Then there are additional steps and additional process needed to effectuate that. We can and NDOT can't just unilaterally go and establish access. So, there would be other checkpoints along the way. But we do want you to communicate that, that this matters as a, as a policy decision. And it's something that we think will help improve the overall vision and mobility and integration of those with the uses in this area. It's a policy decision and direction.
Good question, Commissioner. Commissioner Clifton?
It's not that I don't exactly like it. I just place a, a high value on, on a currently important use of our parks.
Yes.
That I'm unwilling to take a stand that endorses that the only way out of this obviously longstanding problem is to accept one remedy that has some potential perhaps, but we don't, that I don't know at least yet, is the only way to go. It may be the only way to go. That's, that's what I'm trying to say.
I agree. We agree with that. And we, we can't, we wouldn't unilaterally make that decision in, in any event. There are multiple points of entry to Highway 100. Many don't engage the park at all. So, there are a lot of different things that we can evaluate. They all have upsides and downsides. We recommended a, a one alternative that we think sort of most holistically responds to the issues. But you'll notice we weren't, we weren't detailed about exactly where it would go because these conversations haven't happened. And we also give great value to the park. I mean, that's part of our mission, I think, is really caring for these, these public spaces. So, we would never put something like that on the table without really careful thought. We're just not there.
It's good. Snap. Please, get it.
So, my only question was in, in follow-up to what Stewart asked the first time around about something about the traffic. And I think the response was that we don't think that the level of traffic on the non-arterial roads is acceptable with the Cheekwood. I think my question was, if you took Cheekwood out of the mix, would the volume of traffic on those arterial roads still be considered unacceptable? And if so, to me, that's an argument for prioritizing some element of shared access in addition to the environmental benefit. But if we're going far enough as to say the level of traffic generated, which it seems to me is shown in these slides, then from the perspective of a policy discussion, I feel like I would wanna make the recommendation that my priority would be shared access first. Like, that should be the initial goal before we, you know, versus, which, which prioritizes some of the access points over others.
I think I heard from both you and Commissioner Dundon that you, first and foremost, we need to protect natural features and not, anytime you add access or new parking even, you're degrading the area's natural features. And so, I, I, we can refine, we can refine the recommendation of it's the will of the commission to say that they, you want us to prioritize shared access. We've left it a little more open for NDOT to have some discretion, but we can express your views. You're, this isn't a vote on a subdivision where you're in a quasi-judicial role. I mean, you can give that policy guidance and we'll certainly share it with NDOT.
I was deliberate that time. Any other discussion? And before we ask for a, a motion, I do want the citizens, and we're citizens too. We're, we're very much part of this discussion. And we all, I think it's evidence, you, you've sat here all night with us. We do that every two weeks. Sometimes we go past midnight. We're all volunteers other than the staff. And I will attest that all of the commissioners love this city. And they love the things about it. And they love these two entities. And that area of town is a very important part of our community. And so, I just wanna say, I appreciate the commissioners for all that you guys do. And over and over again, you come to these meetings. And I appreciate Commissioner Henley as well. Just he, he works very hard. And I was a Parks Board member as well one time. And I remember how much time it took away from my family. And so, it's a really important thing to have these types of committed people and the Vice Chair and I really appreciate this, this group. So, with that, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll need a motion, Vice Chair or Commissioner Henley. I, I don't wanna put any pressure on, on you. Usually, I, I say Vice Chair 'cause she's like got my back all the time, hopefully, but.
I'm, I'm looking. Vice Chair seems to be deferring to me. I will, I, I will be making a motion. But I, but I do wanna say this first. I, I think it's important to state, it was, it was detailed here. I think we've had our staff really diligently working on this. And then also give yet another communication that they are prepared and, and ready for the work ahead. I'm, I as a board member of both of this body and of the Parks Board am committed to this. I think so often we have constituents come to us and the thing they ask for is that path forward and that plan. And they want to know what's next. And I think our staff has done a fantastic job of, as far as they can, outlining what that is and, and being able to share. That, that commitment today is something I'm, I'm excited to do. But collaboration is needed. I mean, we've got, we've got representation from a lot of the stakeholders here in the room. And we've made that collaboration essential to this implementation plan that, that we're recommending. So, I just wanted to, you know, just also say that I did hear that, like anything, there's always room for improvement. I took a lot of personal notes. I saw staff writing.
I took a lot of personal notes, I saw staff writing down many things, also heard from, from those who are here that I'm sure will continue to be engaged stakeholders, and then also my fellow commissioners. And so I think there is work to be done, I think one great thing about it is, we have an opportunity to get started. And so with that, I would like to make a motion that we do accept the recommendations from the study as presented. I know there were a lot of comments that were given, I don't know how to properly motion weaving those all in, but I will say that I do have my notes, and I'm sure that I'll be collaborating with staff quite heavily in the coming weeks.
That's a proper motion, is there a second? A second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say it.
Can I just make the question that, can, so I do feel strongly about prioritizing shared access, is it sufficient that I've said it on the record, or do you need me to add anything?
I think you should say, it should be part of the motion that it includes...
Investigating.
Investigating.
Right, I would like to say that the, so in, I guess, Action...
Amendment to the motion.
Are you comfortable with amendment to the motion?
Absolutely comfortable with the friendly amendment.
All right, hold on, hold on. So let's rescind the original motion, is there objection? No objection, so it, this would be a new motion, Commissioner. Is that, is that sufficient?
Yeah, no, I was just thinking that it would be specific to maybe Action Two, because that's where we're addressing, that's where we're addressing the new State Route Access, State Route 100 access. So something there to say with the, you know, priority to investigating shared access or something like that.
Priority to investigating shared access, adding that language to Item Two in the MPC action that is in front of us. Would that suffice? Counselor, would that work?
Yes.
All right. Go ahead, Commissioner Henley, restate your motion.
Restate the motion, okay, I got it, all right. Well, I'd like to move that we approve the MPC action recommendations in front of us, with, with one modification to Item Number Two, that there will be a prioritization for investigating shared access off of Highway 100.
That's a proper motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have it, and it's adopted. Next, well, so before we move on, thank you, everybody, for your patience, thank you for all of that, and I hope you catch the last part of the football game, and get some dinner. Thank you. All right, so we'll let everybody file out. If everybody could actually, we're not quite done with the meeting, so if everybody could file out, that would be great, I know that that's hard to do. All right, so Commissioners, we are on, oh, Commissioner... All right, so Commissioners, under Other Business, H Historic, Mr. Commissioner Smith, anything on historic?
I know we've been here a while, I've kind of got a lengthy update, I'm just kidding. No, no major, no major update here.
Thank you, thank you for your service as well, Commissioner, I appreciate. Parks, Commissioner Henley, anything on extra?
We covered quite a bit.
We covered a lot, okay, thank you. Executive Committee, we don't, the Vice Chair and I don't have anything, other than, we do want to, if you, the Director wants to really highlight our new shiny annual report, and if, on a Sunday afternoon, when you're sleepy, read that, or, yeah, Commissioner Clifton's going to read it tonight. Director, is there anything else that you would like to state about the annual report? Or anything?
This report shows an enormous amount of work from the whole department, I'm so grateful to the staff, we could not do it without you. So thank you for your support, and I do want to say to Harriet and to Joanie that they did a great job, and if you'll give me a little... This, this was, this was actually a very tough project, so, thank you. It is a tough project.
So Counsel Lady, anything on legislative front?
Thank you, Chair, no update legislatively, just want to thank Greg Claxton and the staff on the presentation, the housing and infrastructure presentation today, I'm just really impressed and really appreciate the comprehensiveness and the scope of this plan, and what you all are looking at, and just look forward to continuing to find out more in public engagement as we move forward with this, so just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Lady, and I, a lot of folks have watched the Planning Commission for a long time, a lot of folks have been on here a long time, maybe 100 years, and he's, we have all seen the growth of the department and the professionalism, it's just really has been shining through, and there's just really a lot of big things that are happening. And I do want to, Director, I feel like we have a really good bench, and I want to say thank you for all your leadership.
Thank you.
For that.
Lisa wanted to say something.
Oh, Lisa's?
Just to remind everyone that this is our only meeting in January, we do not meet again until February 13.
That's good news, too. That's right. All right, seeing no other business, is there a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.